Okay.
Andrew.
Oh, there he is.
You are unmuted. They can hear you.
Hi, Denny.
Hi.
How's Texas?
Yes, how Texas is.
Yes, uh, Texas.
It's Texas.
Near as good as.
Probably a lot warmer there than it is here.
A little warmer.
Sorry?
Seventy degrees.
Well, welcome to the meeting. Welcome to the meeting, Denny. You can go ahead and maybe mute yourself until you have enough, um, until we need to do a roll call or something. Just in case you have background noise. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. Is the city staff ready to begin? Okay. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at four oh six P M on Wednesday, December eighteenth. Start off with a roll call, please.
Counselor Galton. You're online. Want to just raise your hand or say here? Okay. I'll take that. Counselor Tysoe.
Here.
Ms. Manelli.
Here.
Mayor Thompson.
Here.
And I think Counselor Olson will be right back and then Counselor Wallace will quit me.
Thank you. Uh, before we move to item number three, I just want to recognize a special member of our audience today. My dad, Kent Felton. Here. Thank you for coming, Dad. Um, so I'll move on to approval of the minutes. Can we, um, take a look at the November twentieth, twenty twenty-four council minutes, everyone? And if you haven't had a chance to review them, take a, take a peek. If you have, and there's any corrections or additions or corrections, let me know.
Well, under the, the one thing I have under the open forum, um, it just, it says where the city said, the city will not be pursuing an investigation of the accused employees. It should be named employees.
Yeah, I think that's a good correction.
Yeah.
Good catch.
That's really all I saw on that.
Ronnie?
Yeah, just to call out Ronnie anytime you have directives to him.
Okay.
He reviews this video, email.
Perfect. Ronnie, if you could make that correction? Dan, Denny, was there anything that you saw on the November minutes that needs attention?
I don't think so. We're fine. Oh, you were talking to Denny on.
No, I'm talking to both of you.
Oh.
I'm talking to both of you.
Yeah, okay.
Um, if not, then I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the November twenty twenty-four, uh, can regular council seat, council city minutes, uh, with the. Minutes.
One second.
Okay, all of us in favor, raise your hand, please.
You can't see your hand, but zooming it off to the right.
Denny, if you're in favor of approving the November minutes, can you raise your hand, please?
I'm in.
Okay, perfect. Okay, we do not have a special presentation. We'll move on to open forum. Um, and we're gonna have to try to keep it to three minutes tonight because we have a really packed agenda this evening. So if you could, please try to respect the three minutes. You want a time for us? That'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate that. So I think there was a sign-in sheet that got started. Thanks for doing that as well.
It's floating around.
Um, was Jan, Janet first?
Oh, no.
[laughing]
Oh. That's what they say about triers.
If you could just state your name and the city that you live in, please, and then.
I've sent you guys a bunch of stuff.
Yep.
And so I thought I'd give you a little four points.
And I'll put one here.
Okay. And also, um, if it allows Susan's gonna give me her three minutes, I might, I might just take like four.
All right.
Thank you. Number? What city you live in?
Um, I've got the resolutions, sixteen, and my biggest question about this is why it's needed. Um, because it's like it'd be just administratively effective to have a resolution for each grant and each property negotiation. So I was wondering why, you know, the broad resolution is needed. And I also am still curious about where the comprehensive analysis is. And you're making this approval based on that. And then one question is last meeting, I thought it was gonna say that all grants needed to be approved by city council. This said that grants that capital that you are keeping in form of grants, and that's, that seems to be to be different. After the fact information. I wondered about that wording. Other topic is the West Side Trail and Park and the grant requirement. And I think you said that you were gonna ask Mike about it, and I said in his public talk about it tonight. When I got the grant, I couldn't find anything that required the concept plan to be approved by this December thirty-first. I think the, the public report, but I couldn't find that. And I think based on what I heard, the planning commission meeting and then the city council meeting, the thing that it said is that, I told you guys that it was, you write December, so I would probably like to have that clarified. Another part of that is, um, if it doesn't need to be approved, pardon the grant, there's probably other reasons. And I would just suggest, whatever the reasons are, you will need time to think about it and check into it and get other people's opinion on it. So just based on this, I have another question. Um, based on this, I would say.
Taking Susan's three minutes. [laughing] Thank you.
I would encourage you just to vote yes, because I think you probably will want time to figure out those costs of approving it, um, and, and have some time. Now, there are many reasons why not to approve it, and I think one is the community's concerns. And Counselor Wallace asked, asked me like, why with all the public input, people have still, have still been unhappy with this? And I thought about that, and, um, but the consultants and staff did a great job, but lots of community input, and so I want to recognize that. I mean, that was really good. And I think what happened was, we've been talking about this for years. It's always been a trail. Natural trail, it's been, you know, native vegetation, it's been wetlands. And it was a shock to me when I saw the trail and park with all the amenities. I'm guessing that might be the same for others. It was a shock. And so I think the community needs time for it. Be it great, I think roundtable discussion, like that you mentioned. I thought that those roundtables were really great, and this might be a really good one for you to have as a community. But you really want, you know, some of this park. So. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, do I?
Oh, no. [laughing] If you could please, um, tell us your name and what city you live in.
That's all. I gotta reset this. Let the phone, everybody, but you know how phones are, that they're smart. The person who's actually operating it. You better be right, because they have a high artificial intelligence. That's not smarter than you are, anyway. Excuse me, I think I'm done. Um, you know, it passes out.
Um, so my name's Steve Stevens, everybody. I was the president of Edgewater at one time. Mike knows me too. So here's the deal. I want to pass out a couple of these, but there's some questions on them. Maybe it might even save me a little bit of time when you go around. If not, that's fine. So here's the deal. Um, with everything, and Mike and I talked a little bit, um, in open field now. I had a skate park. Going back to Mike and I's original, like years ago, um, relationship that started in our last one about some FEMA options here a couple of years ago. And we're gonna pick our relationship back up and see where that goes on how I can help the city for sure. It has nothing to do with this. I have nothing to do with this. I raised my right hand once for my country, and I'm gonna help my city any way that I can. So do the agencies have any shared, um, idea about what's really going on with the city as it currently states today? Website, how, how are we doing with it? I'm kind of paraphrasing each one because I have fourteen questions here. Would it be okay for, with the city manager to pull an appraisal on Edgewater, and it might be all, all good and great if we just need to know these things? Is, uh, is or has the power company sold King City land and, uh, on the other half of Edgewater? Who owns that land next to Edgewater? Now, does the state of Oregon have a plan that will vary the lines for the next ten or twenty years? If so, our HOA property value just goes up, especially if this thing's gonna take twenty years to complete? What does the state of Oregon's mean in measurement as far as family wrecked space to the residential coexistence and feet? What is it currently at in King City as far as measurable? Who tagged the grade school and Fisher since, uh, November twenty-first, fourth? And that, uh, seems to be a pretty big deal, too. Somebody's trying to represent themselves on what's going on and what's happening now. Out of over the four hundred and fifty communities surveyed, which was one, how many were actually King City homeowners? King City homeowners who lived in Edgewater and grade school, uh, kids themselves out of those four hundred and fifty? That information should be actually posted on the website as far as everything's concerned. There's a lot of questions out there in the community. Has the city thought of a compensation plan for the homes and the direct pathway of the plan? I did talk to Mike a little bit about that. I have talked to people in Edgewater, but as far as this goes, the noise and everything else that's gonna happen to those homes, they're actually gonna lose property value. Four hundred and thirty-two homes actually are in Edgewater property. Twenty-five percent of those homes, if they lose any form of property value, that's twenty-five percent of Edgewater. Edgewater is actually the largest HOA in King City. Okay? That needs to be considered. Why has everything had to move so fast, especially since October? The one open house was on Friday at five thirty P M on what weekend? Halloween weekend.
Okay, go ahead.
And this is out of respect for you, mayor. Mr. Lawyer, are you currently getting paid at this given moment by the city? Yes or no? Didn't think we did. Yes, sir. Yes or no?
No, you don't have to answer that.
Okay.
Sorry.
So when spoke in November, as far as the four million dollars left on the table, I tried to look to see where that four million dollars is being left on the table. If you, you don't vote this in, I couldn't find it. My city. I couldn't find four million dollars in the last thing. When he said it's not you, it's gonna be the next mayor or somebody who votes this in, that's disrespectful for my city. My city council, how do I know? Because I was the president who said, what's in an HOA? Put two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of trees in my HOA, and they cut my head off for twenty grand after that. But I did it to save home value, remove trees, so that the plumbing issues aren't five or six years later. I sacrificed myself. I know what it takes.
Thank you.
I know what it takes.
Thank you very much. Okay, I don't have the list, so maybe I, oh. Yeah, I could, mind handing it over, please. Thank you, so I can call. Okay, Chuck Watson, you're up next. Chuck?
Hi there. How are you?
Good, how are you?
I'm doing well.
If you could tell us your name and what city you live in, please.
Uh, I'm Chuck Watson, and I'm a, uh, resident of unincorporated Washington County. I'm the president of Rivermead Community Club. We're just to the west of everybody on the other side of the, uh, power line. Um, uh, I'm, I'm here sort of like you, representing, uh, Edgewater. Um, I'm here because we are impacted a lot by this, by everything that's going on, uh, over the next decade, if you will. Um, and one of the things that, that really sort of has gotten my goat, and I've tried to been figuring out how to best, uh, best address this. Um, I've been to two meetings with the developer that's building the new, uh, planned community in the corner, one thirty-seventh and, uh, Beefen Road. And I've gotten a lot of, a lot of good information from him regarding development, the roads, uh, whether it's a roundabout, whether it's how Beefen Road's gonna be affected, whether it's how the, the northern part of this, uh, uh, West Side Trail's gonna be affected, how one thirty-seventh, which is the one arterial that's gonna affect our neighborhood, uh, is gonna be affected. Um, and got a lot of information, but you know what? The only person I've gotten that information from is him. County hasn't done anything. The council hasn't, hasn't told us anything. Nobody has told us anything. The state, nobody else. King City hasn't told us anything. The only person that we've gotten information from is from the developer himself. I think that's unfair. It's not my responsibility. It's not a resident's responsibility to get on the computer and to do all that searching and do all that Google searching and everything, go to the website, look at the King City website and find all that information and see what's going on. It's everybody's responsibility. Granted, we're in unincorporated Washington County, but we're to be incorporated into King City. And we are gonna be, we are, we are gonna be directly affected by everything that's going on, whether it's parking related to this, the parking related to that community that's gonna be developed, or the road, or the intersection, whatever it may be. We deserve to be informed.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Thanks for sharing. Um, is it Charlotte? Did I say it right?
Yes.
Okay. Charlotte, if you could just say your name and the city that you live in, and then try to keep it to three minutes, please.
My name is Charlotte. My, I live in King City. I'm here to, um, to object very, very strongly to your, uh, present. Trail. And thank you very much to be, to be, uh, three years speaker. Thank you very much. I'm totally working with you. You know, I live on Romeo Terrace. My house, one of those, that directly spaces the, the, where your trail's gonna be, the power line. And you say you want to, um, construct, uh, construct under the power line. And I am objecting to very, very strongly. Just imagine. I don't know where you live, but you can imagine for a moment, you're back here. A playground in your backyard, park, where people go into the bathroom and all that. Can you imagine that? That's what I'm going to live through with all, with that, with that. So I don't quite understand. When you say this is to enhance the community, by enhancing, you mean noise enhances the community? Does it enhance the community? I don't think so. I don't think so. You need to think again about construction on that, under those power lines. That's, that's our link. We own it. And I think we have rights. Yes, the city ultimately, you can do whatever you want, but I think we do have rights. Before Edgewater, we want that right. Thank you. I'm pleased with you to stay away from that. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Greg Russell? If you could state your name and the city you live in, please, and just try to keep.
Greg Russell. I'm in unincorporated Washington County. And, um, unite King City, unite King City. You've heard this phrase spoken and written many times before. Let's examine that phrase just a little bit closer. Unite means to bring together for a common purpose or action. You represent the voters in King City and in Edgewater, not the city manager, not the city attorney, right? Your as counselors follow the wishes of the constituents, your voters. The upcoming counselor position clearly states who the voters have chosen. That individual is Steve Gearhart.
Thank you so much. Debbie? Ball? Debbie? Oh, okay. Jessica? Jessica, if you could just say your name and the city you live in, please.
Thank you. I'm Jessica Braverman. I live in King City. I am the current HOA president of Edgewater, and I'm speaking today on behalf of myself as a homeowner. And also, I have just been the highest, I guess I got the highest votes to join you all on the King City Council, and I will be happily joining you on that side of the fence, hopefully on January fifteenth. Um, I'm disappointed, and I'm at a loss right now to use the right tone and approach. So I hope that you'll take my words with the good spirit that I'm offering them. Um, as I suspected at the last council meeting, there has not been an urgency to rush this resolution through. Either Resolution fifteen nor sixteen looks to be urgent or immediate. Um, additionally, um, as the president of the HOA, I have written letters to your planning commissioners. I sent copies to Ronnie. I've had our HOA Association attorney write to you. We've asked you to slow down. We've asked you nicely to postpone doing the appraisal on Edgewater's land. We've asked you nicely and kindly and collaboratively to give us a chance to put together our budget so that we can hire the right people to negotiate, that we can hire our own appraisal. And guess what? We have been ignored. We've been ignored. I don't know how you think that comes across to us, but I can tell you that if you want to have a collaboration with your constituency, with Edgewater, with your incoming council member who is coming to work tirelessly alongside all of you for the betterment of the voters and the community, I don't know if that's how you intend to come across to us and to our board and to me personally. But it feels very aggressive. It feels very disrespectful. It feels very dismissive. It does not feel collaboratively, put together, and it doesn't seem fair. Okay? So I'm urging all of you right now, including Denny, I'm sorry you're not here in person, but I hope you can hear me, because, Denny, I know that you have acted as the president of your HOA Association in the past, and I can imagine you know how I feel, that if the city council started to do appraisals on your land and never even reached out to sit down to talk to you as a human being, I have a feeling you might be able to know how I feel. Okay? So whether the city manager now admits, oh, shucks, I thought it was urgent, I thought we had these deadlines, oh, or by sheer incompetence, there is really no edges and circumstance for you to be passing these resolutions right now. In fact, if you really want to be inviting to the new three city counselors that will be joining you, why not wait until we take our seats? And let us collaborate further on behalf of the voters and behalf of the community and have a say with you, alongside you, working with you, instead of being made to feel like we have to come in and work against you. That is the feeling that you may not be intentionally putting forward to us, but that's how it feels. Okay? So please, by rushing and by these false deadlines and by rushing appointments to the city council before we're even seated, it feels very unwelcome. The voters also would like to have competence in our city council government. The voters have tried to get your attention, but unfortunately, it doesn't seem like any of you are listening. The voters had a huge recall. Many of you called it radical, but really, the voters were trying to get your attention. I have extra minutes. Um.
Sorry, you're extra minute.
Oh, thank you. Okay, well, I have, hopefully, a few more. Um, the voters want change. The voters have tried to get your attention. They've gone to court to tell you, no, you don't just move one city council who's been recalled and then move them to the seat down and put them back on the city council. The ta, the taxpayers and the voters are trying the best way they know how through the voting election process to tell you they are not happy or satisfied with what you're doing. They want change. They want collaboration. They want transparency. They want to know what's going on in a better format. They want honesty. They want ethics. They want no more cronyism and putting on your friends and the people that are gonna vote with you. They want you to follow what the voters want. And even if you don't like it, and sometimes I don't like it, but you have a duty to have trust with your voters, and the voters need to have trust in you. So I ask you, what exactly are your goals? Are you planning to work cooperatively with the three incoming city counselors, or are you gonna declare war on us? Are you interested in sitting down with Edgewater and the Edgewater Board? You have forced Edgewater to expand its budget that didn't have. We've now hired an attorney who's a land use attorney. Would you now sit down with us before you start pushing through these resolutions? Can you show cooperation? Um, can you show the voters that they can actually trust you? Thank you.
Dan Brenner?
I'm not going to speak. I was going to give my three minutes to Don Mobley, who is on Zoom, and she asked me to pass these out to you. This is what she will be saying.
Thank you.
Just so that you could follow along with what she's speaking, just in case you can't hear her.
Thank you.
And for your record, my name is Dan Brenner. I live at one four zero two zero on this river lane in Agador.
Thanks, Dan.
I'm gonna unmute Don.
Yes.
Please, thank you.
Yeah, definitely promote her.
All right, Don, unmuted.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Hi, Don. If you could go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us what city you live in, and you have six minutes, because you have some of Dan's minutes.
I appreciate it. Hopefully, I'll take about five. Um, uh, Don Mobley, I am unincorporated, um, Washington County in the Rivermead neighborhood, uh, one seven oh three O Southwest, one hundred and thirty-seven. Um, I have some comments about the West Side Trail and Park Concept Resolution twenty-four fifteen. Um, I have provided the council with detailed, um, email prior to this meeting, and following, the following statements are highlights from that email, and, um, I have provided tonight, as Dan said, a bullet point of just some additional information. So, um, first and foremost, um, King City does not have to approve the concept plan, um, at the council meeting tonight. Um, both the Planning Commission and the City Council were, were told by the city staff that Metro Grant has a December thirty-first deadline and that the concept plan needs to be approved by then. For the terms of the Metro Grant, only a progress report is due to Metro by December thirty-first. This does not mean that the concept plan has to be approved. The grant does not end until twenty twenty-seven, so the deadline to approve the concept plan by December thirty-first is false and makes this approval feel rushed. Reasons the city council, um, should wait to approve the concept plan? King City, as a developer, must follow the municipal code requirements. At the November Planning Commission meeting, Counselor Mitchell said that the municipal code specifically requires developers to confirm with the parks plan that is in the Kingston Terrace master, master plan. The current West Side Trail Park concept plan does not do this because it has the features of a community park. But the master plan says it will be a linear park. The master plan says that the area under the power lines will be a trail and a linear park. A linear park features are an open space with multi-use paths, uh, potential exercise stations, and low maintenance plants. This is clearly different from the concept plan that will be in front of you today. The concept plan is what the master plan describes as a community park. Features that are included are a range of amenities that could include a playground, community garden, picnic shelters, natural play activities like hiking and disc golf, access to the Twolton River, restrooms, and parking. The trail pathways connect the park to the larger regional trail network, and also noted in the legend and in photos in the master plan are carts and ball fields. From transcripts pulled from the previous meetings, Mike Weston said that he was not prepared to answer Commissioner Mitchell's questions, and that there should be a little more research, but that it shouldn't stop them without the answer to the question. The Planning Commission did not have all the information that they needed to make a recommendation. Mike Weston told them that we need, from this planning commission, this body is to render that recommendation so we can move this up to the council so we can get a, uh, a determination before the end of the year. The Planning Commission was misled and pressured to approve the concept. The Planning Commission was misled and pressured to approve the concept plan for recommendation to council, and it did not pass unanimously. This pressure and false rush to approve the concept plan only continues to erode the trust of the voters. Continuing to run full speed ahead without collaborating with Edgewater appropriately isn't a good look for King City's first land acquisition. Allowing Edgewater time to properly inform their residents and participate in non-hostile negotiations will set the pace for the future land acquisitions needed to complete the Kingston Terrace Master Plan. Politically and financially, it is better for King City to delay approval not only to allow time to collaborate with Edgewater and neighboring communities, but also to be able to present an accurate concept plan for future grant applications. Resolution 2415 states that by approving the concept plan, it has a fiscal impact. It says the concept plan will be featured in grant applications as the city pursues funding sources for the projects. This is not 100% true. Grants have already been applied for for the high priority roads, trail, parking, and water access projects within the council-approved concept plan. The concept plan submitted for the $7 million RFFA grant as an Exhibit A included only roads, the trail, and parking. The version of the concept plan used in the November application to Metro was the version given to the Planning Commission at the October 9th meeting. It was not the updated version the Planning Commission approved for recommendation to the council at the November 13th meeting. I do agree that applying for grants has a fiscal impact on the city. It is a valid reason to delay approval today until a sound concept plan can be produced for future grant applications. Lastly, there was just an election and we have three new city councillors. By rushing this approval today, it gives the impression that you are trying to bypass the newly elected councillors, and it's just not a good look. So thank you for your time, guys. I appreciate it. And I am finished.
Thank you, Dawn. Appreciate it. Okay, Gretchen, you're up next. Okay, take your time. Go ahead and say your name and the city you live in.
I'm a city engineer on 6585 Southwest Royal Park Way here in King City. I'd like to change the subject for a minute. I am here wearing my hat as the Chair of the Planning Commission, and I speak for the Planning Commission that we want to congratulate back here. The amount of research that he did for all of the code changes that you will be seeing tonight was amazing. He was able to answer every question that Planning Commissioners had, and I think the council should be aware of the terrific job that he has done in working on the changes to the codes that you'll be seeing tonight.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that. Kudos to you.
It's a great time to be cut out of the spotlight.
Yeah.
All this before Christmas.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to, yes, please?
Except when I interrupt, I can't.
Oh, yeah, that's great. Go ahead and say your name and the city you live in, please.
I gave you guys' time last time. I went a little bit long. It's kind of hard writing these up at work and then trying to get over here, so I'm going to try to keep it short this time. Okay, so at the last meeting, I was actually hoping Councillor Walton was here, but hopefully you can watch the video. So the last time, you know, I was up here speaking and then you guys spoke afterward, the councilman actually had mentioned that, you know, he'd like to see data from the Edgewater. I mentioned a few times, I am an engineer. I'm all about data. So I do agree. I'm excited that with hopefully a little bit more time, my HOA, they're doing the right thing, trying to educate folks, trying to get lawyers involved, trying to get our own appraisal, you know, doing the right things. They just need more time. I'm looking forward to seeing the data too from the citizens. And then I want to just take that sentiment, you know, like forward from him. I think we need to see data from the city manager, right? I've never, I've been here, you know, two or three times. I felt really hurt by Councilman Walton, and I really appreciate it. I wanted to tell him thank you. You know, when he was like saying that he's, you know, he saw the city manager in the hall and was thinking outside the box, like, hey, we have some upset people. Can we do something, maybe something different? I love that he asked that question. I felt so heard by him. And I really thank you, you know, wherever you're at, thank you for that. And, you know, he asked, you know, the city manager and the city manager, I believe it was something to the effect that if we don't do anything, you know, county or Sherwood, or I don't remember the exact words, but, you know, I want to see the data for that too. Like, what happens? At this point, I'm so frustrated with this city and this group of people over here predominantly. I would love to see what Sherwood wants to do. Bring on the county. Let's see the data. If you're going to have a better idea, maybe they'll listen to us. At this point, I want to see that data too, and I ask, you know, that you guys, you know, you're asking for data here. Our HOA is going to give you guys some data eventually. I, you know, vet him too, right? And it's been more so now, and I'm hearing from whoever the first person that spoke was, that this deadline of December 31st wasn't even a real deadline. Like, we need, like, not getting false information. We have to get the right information here. So I say, please, just vet the information that comes from the manager. And then just to close, because I definitely talk a little bit too much, I do want to say that we do have a new council coming, and these are big decisions. I do think we should wait on that. We have newly voted folks coming in. These kind of decisions should wait for your, you know, your partners in crime to go up there and you guys can all get together and actually, you know, they're going to be on the council for a while and you guys vet this and come together on this. I don't think the decision needs to be rushed. And then on the second aspect, and I'll close there, I did vote for Mr. Gerhart. He's sitting number four right now, thousands of votes. I think that he should be the next person picked. I really do. I don't think any, anyone else that's in, you know, has that votes, right? No one else has 1,400, 1,500 votes. I think he should be picked as the, for the.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Is there anyone else that's here that would like to speak during open forum? It's okay. I'll write your name down. Just go ahead and give me your full name, please.
Sarah Dewett, D-E-W-E-T-T.
Okay, and what city do you live in?
King City.
Okay, you have three minutes.
I've lived in the King City area for quite a while. I've worked for the county for five years. I live in Edgewater now, but before then, I was on Elsner. Before, there was Roy Rogers. Before, there was a, you know, lot, it's changed. But I am afraid of this. I'm a first to come. Fisher Road, extensions, we don't feel like, and heard, and something, you know, smells fish. Something's going on. It's all a mess.
Thank you so.
Your heart for council?
Appreciate you taking time off work to come, and I appreciate you taking time to speak for the very first time. Very brave of you, and I applaud you. And you go to Deer Creek? Oh, you pointed over at Deer. Oh, see, no, see, very nice, very nice. Well, thank you for joining us. Oh, really? Oh, sweet. Okay, anyone else? Is there anyone online that would like to? Max, is there anyone online that is raising their hand, literally, like to speak?
Maybe you asked one more time. I'm not seeing anyone.
Is there anyone online?
Yep, no?
I got Dr. Chelley.
Okay. Unmute him, please. Hi, Smart.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead and tell us your name, the city you live in, and you have three minutes.
Yes, Smart Chelley. I live in King City. Thank you for the opportunity. I just want to thank everyone for coming out today. I mean, again, we are a city that is just growing. And like we all know, we all have an interest in the city. That's why we live here, right? And everything we do is just towards making the city a better place for everyone and all of us. And like everyone has been saying, we just don't want to have a situation where we have, like, it's a war zone. It's not good for us as a city. I've mentioned this a number of times. Whatever we can do as a city to keep it clean, to keep it safe, to keep it as comfortable as possible, that's what we're all working together to do, to achieve, right? And so I always encourage people to say, come to these meetings, not just when Fisher Road has been discussed, when maybe some other topic of interest has been discussed. Come as much as possible as you're able to, to attend and participate and contribute to what we are doing as a city. And so I just want to thank everyone for all the input. Again, I just want to say, everything that has been done is towards the city, the residents. My time on the council and my time serving the city has always been serving the city for the betterment of the city and the residents, not just any specific individuals or not just any specific group of people, but just for everyone, pretty much. That's the goal. And so I understand everyone's concern. I understand everyone's voicing as to what reason is for coming up to the podium and saying what they need to say. It's good. That's why we're democracy, right? Everyone is given the opportunity to come up and voice your opinion and voice your concern, and that's what we're doing. The way we do it is really very important. And so I really applaud everyone's, how you're able to be professional, if you will, and be able to do it in a way that respects what the city is doing. Talking to the point of saying the city should pause on some of the actions or the activities going on. Anyone that goes into any kind of government environment, you know, everything is timed, and these things move slowly. Sometimes you have deadlines, but sometimes the process is very slow. And so saying to put a pause on this action or put a pause on that action, I just want to let everyone know that sometimes it's for the loss of the city. We're going to lose some of these things that we're saying to put a pause on until we get other appointed, elected people on board. It's just like saying the current government, federal government should put everything on pause until the elected president or the elected government comes into power. You don't put things on pause, why? Because you're waiting for some, for that elected person to come into power. You need to keep moving things. We're not just doing business for just Fisher Road. We're not just doing business for things that are just concerning certain group of people. We'd have to run the business of the city everywhere, safety, maintenance, and everything else that we're doing. So we just need to keep all of that in mind, that some of these things are all tied together. If you pause one, it's going to impact the other. If you pause another, it's going to impact. So it's going to be like a cascade, kind of a domino effect that at the end of the day, the city is going to be losing. So please, I just want to let everyone know to just be mindful and be able to give the city, city manager, the city council, and everyone the opportunity to run what they need to run for the betterment of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Smart. Appreciate it.
Good question. Was that part of educating us or informing us?
Okay, we're going to move on to the next, the next one. Next up, we have unfinished business.
I have another person online.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Person online.
Ashley Newman.
Okay, Ashley Newman. Can you unmute Ashley? Hi, Ashley. Can you introduce yourself and tell us what city you live in and try to keep your comments to three minutes, please?
Yes. Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Ashley Newman. I live in King City, and I am a member of now the Edgewater community. I've lived in King City for over eight years now in different neighborhoods. And I just am here tonight. I think it sounds like some other people have voiced the same concern about the current Kingston Terrace Master Plan and that including the West Side Park, I believe it is. And just coming here to request that we slow down the process so that the HOA can, you know, kind of get some, our bearing straight and get things done that we need to get done. I've watched the process of this unfold for many years now. And maybe a month ago or two months ago was the first time that I heard that our particular land, HOA land, was now a part of this park and that the city had wanted, is wanting potentially to purchase it. And they've already gone out onto our land without us knowing about it to get an appraisal done, which also doesn't sit well with me. And so I'm just here tonight as a longtime city member and somebody who wants to continue living in this city for a long time and wants what's best for everybody involved in our community, to request that we, we've written several letters, and I would just like those to be honored and also that we wait to appoint the empty council seat. I know there's been some shenanigans happening there, and I just really request that we listen to the constituency on that and kind of slow down these proceedings. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Ashley. Is there anyone else online that would like to comment during open forum?
I haven't seen anyone.
Yes. Aw, thanks. Thank you. Of course.
Three minutes say a lot for the city. Give us a voice. And that is so powerful.
Well, we're all neighbors. We're all friends. We're all, we're all King City, yeah. I mean, not yet, but we're all neighbors. I mean, Rivermead is, you know, a two-minute walk from my house. So, I mean, I consider that neighbor. So thank you for your words. I appreciate that. Okey dokey. We're on to now unfinished business, item number six, which is the Dixon and 131st Street intersection. Who's going to be presenting on this one? Is it Max or?
He's here too, but we went out to the corner of Dixon and 131st. Measure that street width. It's a 32-foot road. So there's ample space for parking on both sides, plus vehicles in between, according to our code and engineering spec. However, if we want to address the concern that Commissioner Dixon had presented to the council, our recommendation would be to put a sign, no parking from here to corner at about the 40 to 45-foot mark. And that would free up some space on the north side of that road to allow traffic turning onto Dixon, so there's not a conflict right there. The problem with that is it would remove a couple parking spots that were a part of subdivision application when subdivision was put into the south. That property owner widened that road to 32 feet to accommodate. Are the improvements that they didn't widen that road.
So can I ask you a question? Sorry to interrupt you. At what point was, because in the last meeting, we discussed whether or not on the original application, parking was allowed on both sides of the street or just one side of the street? And on the original application, it was only supposed to be, the intention was that it was only going to be allowed on one side of the street. So where did?
Actually, both sides. The street allows parking on both sides of the street. What was brought up and.
I mean, from the last meeting.
Oh, yeah, no, there was.
Max was mistaken when he said that it was a 28-foot road. It's actually 32.
Oh, I see.
So allowing to allow parking on both sides. I think it was 28.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So our recommendation is if we want to address this issue, if the council wants to pick this up, we could potentially put a no parking strip about 40 feet, 40, 45 feet back from the stop sign. There's some pretty nice delineation there. It's a curb break, so we would basically start right at the curb break. Put a no parking from here to corner. We could potentially do. Go around. We would probably start. We did consult with, with our city engineer on this, and he said that was more than adequate.
Yeah, I'm wondering, is 45 feet too much space? Does it need to be 45 feet?
About three, a little less than three car lengths.
I mean, does it need to be that much? I don't want to, I don't want to take away, I don't know what the need is currently.
Technically, you don't need to do anything to access this, to provide parking on both sides of the street.
Yeah.
So technically, the council doesn't need to do anything. It would be a consideration.
Do 35 because that's the visual allowance anyway.
When I, when I said need, I meant what the community members need. Do those homeowners, are they relying on those spaces? I don't know that that street is usually packed on both sides with cars, but I want to be careful in the way that we.
I think, you know, basically, you're leaving two parking spots that are close to the stop sign and.
I think, you know, basically you're leaving two parking spots that are close to the stop sign and leaning back. Be fine. People can park further back, further east. There's usually no cars. For some reason, they all kind of congregate up near the intersection. There's plenty of room further back, uh, the longer walk for whoever, you know, forty farther.
Yeah.
But what it does is it allows people that are exiting, um, Dixon onto a little bit towards the curb. This will allow people that are coming onto Dixon. If you park there and you watch just the, the traffic habits of people, when they, when they pull into Dixon, they pull into the middle of the road. And so this is where the concern starts. People are not going over to the side of the road. And they get scared, I think, because they don't understand their parents on the right-hand side of their car. Something does sound. They think they're going to park the car. So this will allow people that are pulling in, you know, a good cushion from the people that are trying to go on to work.
Great.
And I think the two spots would be sufficient and that's.
Oh, everybody, sorry to interrupt. Say bye to my dad. Bye, kids. Thanks for coming. Sorry, that was really rude. I totally agree. I, I, I think that this is something that we should absolutely do. I was just, was questioning if we actually need forty-five feet or if we can. If, if thirty-five feet, if you.
I think thirty-five, like, two parking spots is about accurate because I've. Whenever I drive by, I look and it, like, like Dave said, it seems like people do kind of try and pack up against Hundred Thirty First on Dixon instead of
Yeah.
going back a little farther. And just so you have a better visual coming off of Dixon there.
And did you have any thoughts on it?
Uh, well, I would start with, uh, you know, a citizen came to the last council meeting and expressed a concern about the road. And we extended resources and jumped on their concerns about the road. And, uh, I think it was great the council listened and acted. And hopefully we will do on all roads. And then, uh, Mike, you said something at the beginning. I don't think I fully understood that the one, uh, development had two parking spots or those public parking spots.
The apartment complex that was put into the south and, uh, it was also the Associated Buckman subdivision there. Uh, when they did that subdivision in the apartment, uh, the developer widened the road at that point in time to allow for parking on both the north and south side of Dixon to accommodate overflow parking from the apartment complex.
Well, it's not a taking then.
It's a public right of way.
Public. Well, I, I just didn't understand that first part when you said that the south development had those parking spots.
Yes.
And it is a public right of way.
Yeah. So it's just overflow parking for the apartment complexes because usually when you do an apartment at the end, we were only, we were only allowed to require, I think it was like one parking spot per unit. And then, I think now I don't think we can. But, um, but, uh, you know, if you have two drivers in an apartment, you're only required to have one parking spot and usually have an overflow of parking. And so typically we would ask that the developer at least provide four accommodations of like one and a half vehicles per, for you.
I, I think I do support this resolution. Um, it's only two spots, but that is generally a senior where the seniors live. And I know if, uh, they were elderly with movability issues or with a disability, that they would be here expressing their concern if they knew this was happening. But I'll still support the resolution.
Um, so it's my understanding, it's not a, it's not actually a resolution, right? Correct? Or is it a resolution?
Your, the council has, uh, wrote authority. So before I go and do something that's outside of our norms by restricting parking on a thirty-two-foot wide road, uh, that's why we came to you guys. Um, and, uh, you know, like I mentioned earlier, it already meets all the standards that it's supposed to meet. And what we're asking the council to consider is something authorized.
Well, the twenty-eight to thirty-two feet is lost on me. Uh, what does our transportation, or what do you recommend on that? That, is this necessary or are we going above and beyond to appease a single constituent?
Well, you know, I think you're going above and beyond what's necessary. Um, I think that there is a safety concern there as what, uh, Mr. Runyon said. If there's somebody coming down Dixon and somebody turns off of Hundred Thirty First Street and they take it wide, there's the chance of a, a head-on collision there if they are not staying in their lane.
Uh, to be able to pull.
I'm less supportive of it now. Can we just stripe the road?
Uh, you could do stripe down the road. Um, whether that's going to address it though, and it is a small stretch of road. It's basically a dead-end cold stack that.
Oh, it's great.
So it's like a cold stack loop. Um, there's not a lot of hand on it for that type of activity. Um, it's, it would just be a nice thing to do so that you have seniors that are coming out of that area. Give them a little bit more elbow room. Um, as they're trying to ingress and egress out of that site. But the problem, the problem is, is that you make an exception here. Then what's, we're, probably you make an exception later and then it's not really necessary. Um, and then you're taking away parking. And I know that parking is a big concern in suburban communities where people depend on their vehicles to drive in and out of urban hubs. And so catch twenty-two and, um.
I think, I think you've answered my question.
Maybe we can, like, like Council Olson said, let's start with a, a center line. Once the weather improves, so we can paint that to give a visual when you are turning off Hundred Thirty First onto Dixon, it gives you that visual of where you need to turn to.
If there's a problem with the perception, how close they are to the car that's parked on the right-hand side.
Okay.
Okay. Just like when people pull off of, uh, B-Bend on one sixteen. Or it was straight away, it is now they've been to the center.
That was the whole reason we just, I mean, this is basically the exact same thing. Right. Same solution. Yeah.
With for that. And I, I do believe in Mr. Nixon's concern, and he's not speaking for himself. He has, uh, he's speaking for the rest of residents, you know, a concern of that. So that's why he came in. And he did the right thing. He came to us first and we actually said no. And then we got to the code and we said, what you need to do is go before the council, get the ball rolling. Get us to go out and take a good, hard look at it and see if it's viable. And.
I agree with painting the curb on the right-hand side and putting a sign. I think it'll be real easy for them to understand, oh, so much better. I can scoot over to the right, give the turn lane a little more room.
Yeah. I think any intersection like that where the cars are on both sides parked right up to the corner, it's a huge, it's a huge safety issue. There's no, there's no way around it. It just is. And.
Straight up Peachville, they can't park that close to the intersection because there's fire hydrants.
Put a fire hydrant there. Problem solved. Well, I think that, um, my opinion is that we should move forward with striping that area. I, my only question was whether it should be thirty-five feet or forty-five feet.
Well, I, I thought it was a forty feet when we went out there. Let's, let's, it didn't want to go forty because there's going to be two spots either way after the thirty-five reporting. Just so the council's familiar, the average, uh, parking space typically. So it'd be, if you wanted to just do two and limit it just to two, it'd be. Stop sign itself right over the apex of one. I think Paul Johnson measured this from the apex, his corner apex. We're losing a little bit already. Yeah.
Okay, so forty.
Oh, yeah. He, he came back. See that? See how he's back? The bar would be here.
Okay.
So he's back.
And you can't really park up to the apex. The apex of the corner would be sticking straight out of the intersection. So, um, and that's how the engineering basically looks at an intersection as they look at pit from the apex. And then they just pull back the twenty-five or thirty-five foot triangles. Get their clear vision triangles in the space needed to get vehicles in safely. This would be in addition to.
Okay. What do you need from us? Mike?
Go forth and conquer.
So on the south side, he has a fifteen-feet of parking.
I don't think that's necessary. He put that in there. He drew his, that concept up as like the absolute maximum.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Possible. In our conversation, he dialed it back and says it's all. Nothing in there.
Right.
But if we're trying to be nice and address this concern, we, I.
I think. I feel more than, I don't think it's that we're trying to be nice. I think we're trying to be safe. And one of the reasons I became a council member is to, is because I'm concerned about safety. And a lot of the safety that I'm concerned about is road safety and pedestrians and car accidents and this tick, 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 right? So I'm not doing this to try to be nice. I'm doing this because I'm concerned about my neighbors and community members, which I guess is nice. So, yeah, I'm being nice. So, um.
I would say, yeah, thirty-six feet from the apex, right? So you're just, we're just losing the two spots.
Or would it be forty feet? What did you, were we saying forty, forty feet? Yeah.
Either. Okay. What a sign.
How do you feel about this, Jen?
How do I feel about it? I think, I think we should be doing it because I'm very grateful. And, and I know at the same time when the change happened on Hundred and Sixteenth. And, uh, and people who are disabled couldn't park their vehicles right, right there for that two, two or three parking places. I know other accommodations ended up having to happen from the other side. But as somebody who turns west into there every day and right out of there every day, I'm very grateful that there are no parking places right there because it is kind of like a bumper car shoot. And even coming off of King George onto a hundred, onto a Hundred and Sixteenth is a bit of a bumper car shoot.
Yeah, we got this exact same problem up there on Hundred Sixteenth where they were parking literally from the corner of B-Bend all the way down to King George there. And
Right.
as people were turning off of B-Bend, there was a couple, it's underbenders where they slammed into the parked car because they were turning left. So.
Yeah, because.
And right.
Any, do you have any thing you would like to add or any questions for the staff? Any, uh, can you hear me okay?
Okay, here you.
Is there a gelfin?
Um, I think this is, is an exercise in, in caution. I'd rather be cautious than, uh, than not.
Perfect. Well said. Thank you. All right. It sounds like we're pretty much all in agreement here. Randy, do you have more to contribute?
I'm going to be consistent. Uh, uh, Mike, uh, Mr. Weston's point, there is a thirty-two-foot road. It does set a precedent. It does eliminate parking, which where I live is a constant struggle. And that that is an elderly area and it could be a burden for somebody with mobility issues or with a disability to have to park another forty feet down and there will be fewer spots. Um, so I think the precedence, it's a thirty-two-foot road. We are listening to traffic calming features last night and they were planning on a road that was going to be twenty-eight feet wide. This one's thirty-two feet wide. So it seems like it's an accommodation for bad drivers to.
Well, I, I look at it as we're trying to keep our community members safe. And so if there are elderly people that live on that street, I'm looking out for them. I don't want somebody turning onto that road and running into one of them. So that's the way I'm looking at it.
Eighty-first all the way, I, I think a stripe might help bad drivers navigate into their lane. Um, but anyways, uh, I'm not supportive of it at this time.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. So, um, all those in favor of, um, instructing the city staff to, um, paint a stripe? It's going to be a sign and a stripe? For paint? Sorry. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Jenny, if you're in favor, can you raise your hand as well, please?
Yes. See?
Thank you. All, all those opposed? Thank you. Moving on to Resolution Twenty, R twenty twenty-four dash sixteen. Resolution of the City Council of the City of King City, Oregon, recognizing the need for necessary infrastructure and land acquisition to support the West Side Trail segment, Twelton River Trail, and Kingston Terrace projects. The presenter is Mike Weston, City Manager.
Yes. So just so everybody knows, we were contacted by an attorney, um, Ed Dobson, um, who represents the Edgewater, uh, HOA. And he specified that all negotiations would be, needed to be through him. Um, and Mike actually asked permission for the acquisition team and to have conversations with the, um, HOA. And didn't receive authorization for that. So if, once someone's represented by an attorney, there was called a representative party. And then we're not, like, I can't have a conversation and I can't instruct Mike to have a conversation or anything else because we're ethically. So I just mentioned that to you because we thought we would, that's how we would start a negotiation, would be going to the HOA and having a conversation about kind of what they want. And, and if, I can forward you the email string back and forth, but we were like, we're very flexible as far as what we would acquire, whether it's right of way or, or property, be simple. Um, we just want to have a conversation, you know, and, and just it was, so, um, all negotiations need to be through me. And they are not interested in telling it. So, um, that's, and again, it's all writing, forwarded to you. So it seems like there might be a disconnect out there between kind of what the HOA president, because I, I heard her very strongly saying, why aren't there being conversations? And I totally agree, ideally, that in, in any negotiation, there would be open lens of communication. But I wanted you guys to understand why there aren't going to be unless we're, we receive other instructions. Unless we receive and writing from that lawyer, um, I was, you know, wrong and, and you would, and that, yeah, that this group wants to meet with the city and have a conversation.
And I just want to add, I think that the way that this works from a municipality side of the house, when we look at properties that we're interested in acquiring, our first step is to get the yellow book appraisal. So once we get the yellow book appraisal, then we open negotiations with the, the property owner to figure out how we can acquire those properties. And typically, the way that we would do that is we would open it up with some offers and back and forth and negotiate that sale of that property. And that could take however long it takes to work it out. We're at the stage before we're negotiating. So we've just got our yellow book appraisal. We're asking you to sign off on this resolution so that we can go talk to the HOA and then we can negotiate for the purchase of this property. But it sounds like, based on the email string, that they're not even interested in talking to us. But that doesn't mean that our process is entirely halted. It just means that we have to basically send our legal team over to negotiate with their legal team, which in my opinion was totally unnecessary because we haven't even talked yet. So the whole idea behind the yellow book was to open it up so that we could start talking. And then we also have other properties through Houss, the Kingston Terrace area that we're looking at. We're, we're praising, we're trying to get things moving on. But the West Side Trail was the priority because we have grants. We have other things. We have many things that are happening. So this was our first. We also have property at the end of Hundred Thirty First that we want to go look at. We have property out at the Harold, Anew Daily property at the far end. We have the municipal site down there. We have the Linear Park off of, uh, B Street and Pomelo and. Bee Street and Pomelo, and we have all these other things that are transpiring within the Kingston Terrace area and throughout King City, and we need flexibility to go out and have those negotiations so that we don't end up in this situation where there's a lot of misunderstandings about what it is that we do as a city. Our first job is to get a yellow book appraisal. When we have the yellow book appraisal, we'll then approach the property owner and have that discussion with the property owner. But it's just our manner of doing things and what has everyone fired up is that our process is very public. So everyone sees our yellow book process come through, they see the appraisals come in and they're firing back before we've even had a chance to present the yellow book appraisal to the homeowners or the property owners. We also have another situation at the corner of a hundred and thirty-seventh and Bee Bend that's outside our city limits right now, but it's gonna present a challenge for us in the future and we're gonna need to work with other agencies like Clean Water Services and Washington County and possibly other developers to see about, um, what solutions. And we've had conversations with Washington County and just yesterday Metro about that situation. I, I'm not aware of the developer having conversations with either of those entities. We've tried to keep that person in the loop, but I was really surprised that they're doing meetings and discussing it because Washington County and Metro haven't even, haven't told us, we're, we're still, everyone's still gathered information. Well, this resolution gives us the ability to go negotiate for those properties, starting with the West Side Trail portion and then moving on through the others. I know that, uh, the new home company right now is working on a park plan for the Harrell and New Daley property. That would be a, a pretty sizable little waterfront park down at the far end and they're talking to us about possibly looking at that, but we're gonna have to go get appraisal on those properties as well and yellow book and everything else before we can move forward. So, um, you know, I, I get flack for saying it, but it's part of the process that we work through this, you know, and this is like the first step that we need in order to go out and get those parcels of interest about that area, you know.
Well, you said, definitely a misunderstanding.
Yes.
As the HOA president expressed, we're absolutely interested in negotiating and communicating. Somewhere in there, there's a, a breakdown. They did hire an attorney to ask for an extension because the HOA has limited resources, limited funds, and just to hire an attorney is a burden on the HOA. And we have a responsibility to the community that we handle this because this is a significant change for Edgewater. So I would like, I'd just suggest, I don't know where the breakdown came, if, uh, Mr. Watts needs to communicate with, um, Mr. Dobson directly to get the communication going or if the HOA, I don't know how to fix that, uh, but the HOA is definitely interested in talking.
I think, I'm not involved at this point in the process. I normally am involved much later in the process, so, that, if an attorney would come in at this point, um, is unusual, but, but again, like, I just, it really sounds like some wires are being crossed somewhere. Um, but, yeah, I mean, I don't need to be part of the community conversation.
I don't know how, if you want me to do it. Oh, I don't know how to get fixed, but I know you, you expressed you had an email chain, we're going back and forth, um, so maybe it's not you.
Send that to the council.
Yeah, we can send that to the council and it's, it's, Metro's land use attorney's also copied on it, just, this is, this regional trail was a Metro twenty-fourteen, uh, visioning, so they're involved in it too, so I just wanted to make sure that they were in the loop. Um, and again, like, I, I think my last email to him is like, we don't have the money yet anyway, so it's kind of a moot point. Um, but, yeah, um, if they, if they wanna talk to Mike, I can, the group, that'll be wonderful.
Right, and, and as an owner in Edgewater, right, I'm finding out that now the HOA is going behind all the owners' backs and hiring an attorney and saying, don't negotiate. So, you know, and then now we have, so, a council member saying that the, the Edgewater Association does wanna negotiate, so, yeah, it's a little...
Well, I am on the HOA board. So, I can clearly say that, yes, we wanna communicate, uh, hopefully, there might be a perception they went behind, but it was brought out at a, an HOA meet, meeting.
The only thing I remember was talking about an appraiser, not an attorney, so...
Well, I'll just say, the reason they hired the attorney was, uh, they received, um, the yellow book appraisal and then there's the talk of the imminent domain and it was a feeling that, oh no, this is happening, uh, there's a perception that, uh, as soon as this is passed, within forty days, we will receive, this is your offer. So, there's a lot of...
Where did that perception come from?
Uh, somewhere in there, it says, uh, there's, uh, they presented, we've got forty days to say yes or no, and the HOA needs time to actually educate the community because a lot of the community's just finding out about this now, and so they can make an informed vote. And they can vote yes, they can vote no, but right now, it's too soon to have the vote. So, anyway, there's just a lot of, uh, wires that aren't connected and I'd like to see, I don't know how to fix it, but I, I think there's gotta be a way to do it.
So, we have the resolution to open up that conversation so we can direct city staff to open up the conversation.
How do we know how to...
Well, I'm sure that can be fixed pretty quick, that the attorney works for the HOA. If the HOA wants to talk, we need to direct it to the attorney and whoever it goes to on that side.
The city staff can't do anything until we tell them they can do something.
Which is what this is.
But we, it's just, it's like a catch twenty-two, right? If we can't tell them, we don't tell them, that they can start negotiating, then there will never be a negotiation.
That's why the city has not contacted the HOA and hasn't responded to emails.
Correct.
Couldn't have sent an email that says, we can't talk to you till we pass the resolution okay in it?
We were supposed to.
Well, we can't negotiate for, because we don't have a...
Well, the resolution came before the council last month, so, so now...
We were contacted by the attorney, we didn't reach out to the attorney, we got an email from him and I was like, that email was, are you representing the HOA? Um, are you there, you know, and, and then he's like, yeah, and all communications need to be through me. I'm like, okay. Um, I have no reason to not believe that.
So, I mean, I, I so much appreciate you that, that, that Edgewater wants to negotiate and I agree that that's the right thing to do and I was there for that last HOA meeting.
Is this all being recorded right now?
Yes.
Okay.
And I, I believe that Edgewater should get their own appraisal, but none of this can even happen until we give the city direction that gives them the okay to negotiate. So, Edgewater HOA, I'm assuming it was Ms. Braverman, hired an attorney to take over negotiations, but negotiations haven't started. So, Edgewater HOA is already paying money, but we're not even allowed to negotiate yet. They're not even allowed to do anything, to talk to this attorney. So, it's, I feel like everybody's spending a bunch of money and nobody's allowed to talk. So I would like to be part of the solution to fix that and allow the city to talk to whoever, either the HOA president, to you, HOA secretary, HOA attorney.
Well, the HOA hired the attorney, I, to ask for it, to delay this, to slow it down, give us time so we can budget and have the money to afford this and that we can educate. That was the reason for hiring an attorney, is to ask for a delay in this.
But if the, if the community doesn't know what it is that they're being offered, what are we negotiating? I'm a Realtor, I know that you need to have an offer, but give a counter offer. So if, if the city wants to make an offer, the, the Edgewater HOA, the Edgewater HOA then would present their counter offer, which would likely be based on having their own appraisal done, or our own appraisal, I live in Edgewater, our own appraisal done. And I'd be happy to help with that process, I mean, I'm not gonna be the mayor for very much longer, so I'd be happy to be, you know, a liaison or help with that because of course, of course the Edgewater HOA should get a fair price and if they don't think the offer is a fair price, then that needs to be negotiated. But they, none of that can start until we give them the, the okay to do that. So we're in a tough spot because we have community members that are scared, they think that if we pass any resolution, that there's gonna be Fisher Road is blowing through, you know, and there's gonna be a skate park in the backyard and all these things, I get it, there's a lot of fear, there's a lot of unknown, but we have to start somewhere, we have to start somewhere. I'm not saying it's necessarily passing this resolution right now, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that we do have to start somewhere so that negotiations can actually happen. If they, if they can't happen, then, then what?
I would strongly support a resolution allowing King City staff to communicate with the HOA. If that's the resolution, I strongly support it. Hope we could write that one up, but I would say that as is written, this is really overly broad and just might in tangent touch on that and it just covers a whole lot more. So if there is a resolution to allow King City staff to communicate, I'm all for it. Let's do it.
We can't, we can't currently communicate because they're represented by an attorney who's told us that all negotiations need to be through him. So, I mean, again...
That's an easy fix, so...
It, it was, that was, this conversation was happened sooner than we anticipated because we were contacted by this attorney.
Right, so, those are two issues.
Right.
One issue is that, like Randy just said, we need to get this attorney to stop, to stop, because this, whoever this attorney is, I mean, all due respect, isn't necessarily, it's too early, like you said, this attorney is too early in the process, there are no negotiations yet, so...
Yeah, well, yeah, it wasn't for him to negotiate, that was, we wanted a delay. Really, ideally, a delay till June because that's when their annual budget is and I don't know, I, I don't see a rush anyways and if the HOA is a substantial part of the, this community at King City.
Sure.
Um, is that an accommodation the city can make?
I don't know how long it's gonna take to get through negotiations, I think, from, from our standpoint, from city's standpoint, is like having the parcels under city control so that we can go for the grants, so that the improvements are, that we're able to move forward for improvements and get grants and money rolling, there's no holdups if the money drops. Um, that's our, that's our goal. Our goal is to make sure that we're voting these amenities for the community and if an opportunity arises, so that we can fund some of these amenities, then we wanna be able to move on. Right? So in order to move on them, we need to have those parcels under our control.
Oh, and make a motion to allow King City staff to talk with HOA representatives, part of the president, or their designate?
Do you think there are other parcels that are north of the HOA's, aren't there? Like, it's more than just the... Yeah, it's more than just the Edgewater HOA, that's why the resolution is written in the manner in which it is, it's to provide us that, that dignity, that, like, variety, yeah, thank you, the flexibility to be able to get out there and negotiate for these other pieces that are happening right now. Like, we have an application right now for Charlotte, just, just north of that area and there's a potential property acquisition at the riverfront on that one. There's the Harrell and New Daley property that's just immediately to the west of that, southwest, they're looking at annexing and potentially there's a property purchase with the park, these seats from that, from that area out of the Kingston Terrace and the Charlotte Farms to go into that park and that would also have potential for kayak launch and other things. So, there's that, there's gonna be full sites that they're working on right now, there's the corner of a hundred and thirty-seventh and Bee Bend that we're eyeballing and trying to figure out what the fix is. It's, it's all the things that I previously mentioned, I'm repeating myself, but, um, there's all these points and parcels of interest throughout Kingston Terrace that are being developed right now and we need that flexibility to be able to negotiate.
I have a question, can, could we, in this resolution, pull out the West Side Trail segment portion?
Yeah.
And if we need to have something, you know, that'll keep us with the resolution to, to go for the Kingston Terrace, for the Charlotte Farms, for the, you know, what other other parks that maybe, um, a new home company will be putting in? If the city's trying to do that, maybe we can do the West Side Trail one as a separate resolution, January, February, you know, I don't know, on a different, another meeting.
I support that, I think that's...
Which, which then, and, you know, with wording like, like Councilor Olson said, with wording that says, allow staff to, you know, to talk with Edgewater HOA and their designate, something like that.
I mean, do you guys, any, any of the options off of a menu of options? So, so normally what would happen with a larger area like this is, is sometimes, sometimes owners contact the city because they're interested in, in a park, sometimes developers contact and say, hey, can we get some development charge credits, park credits, if we do this for you? And normally what we would do is, and then there's some things like this where it's a Metro priority from twenty-fourteen, normally we bring you guys a menu of options, you have a kind of an understanding about some of the costs associated with those and you would select your priority projects and we would kind of, because your, the system, the system development charges are based off of these sort of projects and then you would tell us, okay, here are four priorities and then here's how the funding priorities would work and then through time, stuff we get acquired or not acquired and all of that needs to be approved by you, the city council, or the next, that city, full cycle off. I mean, what I said that someone found offensive was that a current city council can't find a future city council, meaning that they might wanna, if they're able to legally exercise rights, you can't prevent them from doing that under organic state law. Um, so, I don't know what the future priorities might be of the council or what those parks will look like, um, but this kind of would allow us to bring as full of a menu of options as we can and if you like the options, great, and if you don't like the options, you could say no and you could say, try again. I mean, it used to be that parks were just active out for recreation and then they went, that a more common trend now is more of a wilderness park, I mean, that's changed in the last cycle of years.
A West Side Trail, BPA power line side only, which is the trail, the, the portion of the walking trail sits under, am I right, the BPA line?
That probably is hanging on the other property, on the other...
But then that could give everyone time to talk, discuss, put in a separate resolution and we can tie it together at a later date.
Yeah, you're, you're going again, excuse me.
All right, guys, all right, all right, all right. I know it's emotional, I, we understand that, I know this has been a long... Rachel, oh, thank you.
But I, but it's what you're asking me to do here, do you want me to go negotiate or not? Are we pulling the West Side Trail out of the resolution so then we can't go negotiate with them or, what, what...
I think we're discussing options, we're, we're thinking outside the box and just to let you all know, I mean, thank you for sharing during open forum, this is the part of the meeting where we as a council discuss the things on the agenda, you are free to stay here and listen all night, but please try to keep your comments, your gasps, your boos, your whatever to yourself, um, because we are in a business meeting right now, business of the city. And we understand the emotions run high, this has been an, I mean, this Metro Regional Trail has been going on for ten years from, since two thousand fourteen, so this isn't new, um, but it, it's important work and we're doing our best and we're just having a conversation, we're trying to come up with solutions, together, us, with the city, trying to come up with solutions, okay? So just try to be patient, if you need to express yourself, um, you can go outside, go take a break, water, restroom. Anyway, we're gonna continue our meeting now. Go ahead, Mr....
Yeah, and I think that was, that was just, you know, trying to get direction, you know, make sure...
Randy, yes, please. Can I just ask, there's gotta be some pros and some cons to setting aside the West Side Trail, so, can I just get the bullet points of, of, of the cons of doing that? And then, I think the pro is mostly the people who are concerned about Fisher Road and a hundred and thirty-seventh more than any other reason not, but, at least that is what I hear expressed. and 137th more than any other reason not, at least that is what I hear expressed. I hear people saying they're concerned with traffic, they're concerned with noise, they're concerned with potential congestion. I get all that. But at the same time, there can be detrimental things that happen if we decouple the West Side Trail from the rest of it. So I want to know what are, what is, what are the detriment for, from, from the action of decoupling?
Simply put, if we, this resolution is to allow us to go do our job, go negotiate for purchase of property. There's multiple properties, which I've explained to the council.
Right.
Those are throughout Kingston Terrace area. This resolution allows us to go negotiate for this property, pull out the West Side Trail. We've already, that's the one that we've done the most work on. So all the work that our consultants have done to build the yellow book appraisal, which this council approved us to go and do back in, whenever it was, April, May, June, whatever it was, when you guys put us on to this mission to go get the yellow book, that's where we are now. This is like the end of that process, and our next step is to go then negotiate. Right? So if the council approves the resolution with the yellow book, that gives us the okay to go and have that conversation with the Edgewater HOA, negotiate back and forth and propose some offers. Maybe there's some executive session between us and the council to talk about what that offer looks like, and there's like the strategy of going back and forth. I believe executive session does include like the strategic purchase of property. So we would have those discussions with the council and executive session, back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, until we reach a conclusion with the Edgewater HOA. And when we feel like we've negotiated and we're in a good place and everyone agrees, then we would bring it back to the council for final purchase of the property. That's what this resolution allows us to do. Removing that component, which is the only thing that brought us to this point, negates all the work that we've done. So why?
Stops it, doesn't negate it, just pauses it.
Mike, can you speak to that? Because we've heard a lot of recommendations from community members that we slow down and take more time. And can you speak to, what would be the detrimental impacts of waiting and putting it off till January or February or whatever?
So there's multiple opportunities for grant sales. And we don't know when the grant funds are actually going to become available or not. Some are like legislative bills. As we know, from the Christmas tree bills, as soon as legislative votes on it, boom, it's available within eight, nine months, right? So having a resolution and having these parcels procured, having this plan in place and having all this stuff ready beyond 25% gives us the go-ahead to go apply for permits. Permits are going to take anywhere from six months to a year to get anyways, right? Having the property under our control to go for those permits is ideal. So that's another reason to have it. There's multiple reasons why we should not be delaying. We had a grant, we've done the work, we've done the outreach, we've reached this point, we're done. So by just delaying, you're just wasting taxpayer money sitting there doing nothing. And for what? Are we moving forward or are we not? I think that's the question that needs to be asked. We've put a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort into getting this project to where it is today. We've got a lot of community input. Go through a presentation when we get to that resolution on the West Side Trail before you tonight. But this is to negotiate for property, not only just in the West Side Trail, but throughout Kingston.
Hey, Danny, can you hear me? Do you have any questions for city staff or comments or discussion you'd like to add?
You're muted.
You're muted.
Okay. Like I said, some lost on me. I didn't hear everything Mike said, but I think my tendency is to give them the tools to do their job.
Great, thank you, Danny.
Well, land acquisition wasn't needed for the West Side Trail as was originally planned. The land acquisition is now for the West Side Trail park and for roads. So the West Side Trail is originally planned, we don't need to do anything. Is that correct?
I think there's other areas of concern, wetlands there, trying to find the best place to cut lands so that it's less detrimental.
There's one that's going to set a boardwalk.
There are other areas, yes, you're correct, on the roads. We could acquire a rideaway as a simple rideaway. That would be far less beneficial for the HOA if that was the course that they wanted to go, because we would just be buying rideaway. So then, rideaway cost $1,000. First is, we're talking about first in property for the HOA. Another issue is, is if we're talking about amenities and we're talking about adding parking, we're talking about other easements that we may need, whether it's water, sewer, purple line, or if it's respective water. We're going to need those properties in our control in order to-
I think though, I understand your question. We wouldn't need to get property from BPA.
Well, the original plan was you had to put it all under the BPA. West Side Trail, original plan was to put the trail under the BPA lines and a boardwalk over the wetlands.
On the, under the BPA side?
Yeah. Well, you see, the resolution, I mean, there's so much time we've spent on the trail part of it. The resolution is really broad, and I'm not sure what it is, what are the other properties you're interested in acquiring? Does that include the banks and property?
No. I have no interest in acquiring bank and property until that area develops. And I think that's been stated multiple times.
Well, it's also been stated multiple times, King City does not build roads. Only developers. There's been a lot of things said that keeps changing as we go. Originally, the roads weren't going to be built for five, 10, maybe 20 years. I even heard some say it'll never be built. And that resolution we passed in June, this will not put asphalt on the ground. This is just starting, and now we're talking about getting the eminent domain, or whatever, acquiring it and looking at funding to put the roads in. Even if you stub them at 137th, which I'm not sure why that's, maybe that just makes it more digestible. But we are moving on roads way faster than we ever led to believe. And I've only been involved in this for a couple of years, and I've been on the council for whatever, eight months. And it's just amazing how fast things change and how fast they're moving.
We anticipated, just based on what land was owned by developers, that a lot of the development would happen beginning in the, getting adjacent to Roy Rogers. And it would kind of incrementally go along, just because in most jurisdictions, property develops when urban services are at the property line. So that's just what we normally would see in any plan development. What, what has taken us a little bit by surprise is that we've, we have, we don't not yet have an application. We have someone that wants to submit an application, which we haven't taken. We have not taken the subdivision application, because we don't have a, what's called a local wetlands inventory. We're required to have a local wetlands inventory before we process any annexation, except for the ones that already had the LWI that was new home. But we haven't taken that application, but we're aware of it. It's for not an insignificant number of units. So we immediately went to Washington County to make them aware that, hey, as we previously been told, that they considered 137th to be a failing street. And the people that use 137th, they probably wouldn't, they probably agree that it's not functioning as well as, no. So what, the thing, the problem is, we don't own 137th. It's the county's road, and we don't own Beef Bend, that's the county's road. And the property that would most likely solve the traffic issue, whether that was big lies or a roundabout, is it within the city, and so it's what's called extraterritorial. And it's not within the developer's development that they anticipate. So that the part where we could do a fix would be, so literally, everything's outside of our control. We don't own either road, we don't own the property that would fix it. We are being told by Washington County, we'll fix it, which, okay, well, where would we get money? We don't have the FPC, road FPCs. We're having a conversation with Metro, and I don't know what the solution will be. But these are the sort of unanticipated things that come up. Right now, if we were to, let's say we had, if just a bunch of money came into Oregon, we couldn't negotiate the purchase of the land that we would need to fix 137th because we're not authorized to negotiate for the purchase. I mean, we could have a preliminary conversation. We could say like, hey, these two parcels are probably what would be needed to fix what the county has identified as a big problem. But we can't, we can't bring you, can't bring you a package or negotiate. So if we're talking about like the pros and cons of giving us kind of broad authority to have these preliminary conversations and then bring items back to you, can't do it right now. And then the other thing that I would say too is, when we're negotiating these things, you're not just negotiating price. You know, sometimes people are like, well, you can have, we're comfortable with this, this and this, but we're, we're going to place a covenant or restriction to keep you from having pickleball because a lot of neighbors are adjacent to pickleball courts. They get really loud. So we, and then we bring that back and be like, yeah, they're willing to sell at this price, but they're not, they're going to condition it that it can't be a skate park. They're going to condition it that it can't be pickleball, whatever, whatever it is, as long as that's in line with like our transportation system plan and our call plan, those are all negotiated elements that could happen. So like permitted parking for members of the HOA adjacent to this, that could be a condition, and it could be open to the public between whatever and whatever. And then you, only if you have the neighborhood association thing, can you park it overnight. I mean, these are, I don't, I don't know what they could play, including once, because we haven't had any conversations with them. But those are the sort of conversations that can happen as part of this process if we're authorized to have them. If, if we want to wait, because it does feel like there's kind of some disinformation or that people haven't had a meeting of the minds with their attorney. So if we wanted to delay it based off of that, there's no reason legally that that couldn't happen. It just could impact the cycle for parks, grants, or state of Oregon grants, or tourism grants, or whatever it is, that we would be able to use. But if we don't, if we don't control, as Mike said, if you don't control the dirt, it's really hard to get a grant based on some hypothetical future acquisition. So those, that is a real reason. That, with that said, like, I, I thought ears. I mean, I heard a lot of people that were expressing a lot of distress. And that, that seemed to think that if you guys pass this, then we would just be able to start cutting checks. And that's, I mean, I don't know what to say other than that, that wouldn't happen. But then it's like, if we're not authorized to have the conversation, I don't know how we can understand what the HOA wants and what might be palatable to them, if anything. Because what we got back, and again, Mike sending you the email string, is they have no interest in selling you. And that might be the case. Maybe that's the case. You know, maybe we could put a package together that benefited them. Because at some point, like, it's possible that something could be negotiated that they really liked. I mean, that would be the idea, is that this would be an amenity for them and like address some of their concerns. I mean, that's, like, a negotiation works if everybody wins, and that's always kind of the goal. But like, we can't, like, I would love nothing more to get, than to get to a rally around the flag issue and have like people clap for us at meetings. But like, we're not going to get there, not, that's going to happen, but, we're not going to get there without developing an understanding of what they would pay. And that's going to only happen as part of negotiation.
I would clap for you, Mr. Watts. There is a lot there. I would say the HOA is not adamant against giving an easement or selling the property. A negotiation on what the road looks like is probably more important than what the dollar amount is. This is, the resolution itself, I think, is overly broad, and it would help, I think it'd help the council make a decision. It states there's a comprehensive analysis, if we could see that. They're going to acquire necessary lands, if we could identify what lands are going to be acquired, which ones are, and then is there a priority list? And then I think Mr. Watts suggested that we could wait a month on this. So if we had the comprehensive analysis, if we had, you know, what lands are we prioritizing, that clarification on the bankston conservation easement, I think is significant. There's no interest in that. Seeing that in writing would probably do the lot of the miscommunication. So anyways, I would like to, let's, let's push this off a month and get some more information for the council. You heard the voices of the community, they feel this is being rushed as well, and would like to see us slow down.
Oh, understandable. You haven't missed anything.
Can we just start over then?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so Councilor Olson is suggesting that we pause, and at the same time, request that the staff provide some more information in order for us to make a more informed decision?
Yes, that'd be really helpful.
I don't know that putting the resolution off till next month really helps the cause of, of what happens with the West Side Trail, quite frankly. And if you stand back and look at the bigger picture, like Danny said, we, as a council, you know, we're, we're the board of directors and, and set the goals. And if we don't allow the city staff to have tools to work with, then they cannot work on behalf of the citizens of King City. And the more you delay, the more expensive things become. I mean, look at the various bridge projects that have gone from a few million dollars to getting darned close to a billion dollars now. I mean, it's just nuts.
Well, I was just saying, the resolution, the way I read it, is overly broad and vague. And I don't know what I'd be voting you for.
And truthfully, I don't think staff can do anything other- And, and truthfully, I don't think staff can do anything other than get yellow book appraisals and, and, and make negotiations with willing owners of properties that are willing to...
West Side Trail was a part of it, but I think like Counselor Manilla suggested earlier, we could separate out some of this, so it's not all packaged in on one big resolution.
I guess what I'm trying to say is, is that it doesn't, it doesn't give them any more authority to start putting restrooms and kayak docks and anything else along that property. All it does is allows them to negotiate either the purchase or a, a lease agreement to, for any of these properties. And, you know, clean water services and utility companies and, and other governing agencies also need to be part of this whole thing. And I know that, um, you know, like the electrical utilities, they, that they wanna run there and cable and all of that, that, you know, that's a ten-year project from start to finish, you know? And so whenever that clock starts ticking.
The property, don't they, for the kayak docks?
I mean, so what Counselor Tice is talking about is like, you can just look at our, uh, ARFA application and the cost to do trail and the road connections now is about, uh, four point eight million. The cost by the time we get the money from ARFA in twenty twenty-eight is like almost ten million. So I agree with what Counselor Tice is saying. It produces to move on these things now and keep, keep the progress moving in a consistent manner. It's still gonna take us probably a year or so, six months to a year to negotiate for the property purchase. It's probably gonna take another year. Say, say we got money that dropped in this legislative session, it would take us an entire year just to get the contract and expend that, not to mention we don't have permits to do it anyway. So until we're able to get to this part done and get the property under control so we can go for the permit, it's, we're just spinning our wheels.
It's a chicken and egg problem.
And the longer we spin our wheels, the more it's gonna cost us down the road.
Can you give us, give the council a cost estimate of how much extra would cost to delay it thirty days?
No, I mean, but the other, the other piece too is that for their HOA to sell property, it requires eighty percent. It requires a vote of eighty percent. I don't know if that's eighty percent of the housing units or...
Exactly.
Or exactly how, how, how they're, because it changes in different HOAs, but it would have to be really broad-based support. And that was like educating people about what it would look like and let's say we brokered a deal with the, the boards and the board's super happy about it and like it. That's just the first step. Then they've got it, they've gotta do outreach to their members, their members have to decide to vote or not. Um, you know, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not like it's, um, like, uh, a property owner to the north of them, where they just have, be simple control and don't need anyone's permission. They can just have a deal and, and if their neighbors don't like it, they're like, sorry, property rights. So, I mean, this would be a, this would be a like the negotiation I would anticipate. It could go smoother, smooth, I mean, but it kind of doesn't feel that way. And, um, you know, that's a eighty percent of the high bar you get to, a very high market.
It is very high. I, it is achievable.
No, no, I didn't, I...
It'll take good communication, uh, it'll take a little bit of time. And the negotiations on, uh, how that Fisher Road's gonna look, that's probably key to getting that eighty percent approval.
It's on the master plan.
I don't know, but, uh...
Well, we're asking it's just to get the conversation started. Now, and the other thing that is hanging out there is this ARFA grant. And if we don't get this conversation going as soon as possible, then that ARFA grant is gonna be going through some evaluations here in the very near future. And as it's being evaluated, it's gonna get less and less desirable because we can't put it out on ours.
Is there evaluation in June?
I'm not sure exactly whether they're gonna break down and start evaluating, but the more, more pieces we can put into place, the stronger our application's going to be. And the further down the permitting process we can get, again, the stronger our application's going to be. And that's why we're here tonight. That's why this is before you, that's why the West Side Trail rollout's in front of you. It's so that we can keep this process going and go for the permits and go for the land acquisition and go for all the things that we have to put in place before we can even break ground or even try to get money to then get contracted to then break ground.
You might ask our, our Metro representative, Garrett Rosenthal, is it? If, you know, where are we in this process? Because he represents all of us.
I think that's a great idea. If you could give me a little more time, a few more days.
But I mean, you know, just you personally could ask.
Application from him. I think that's a great idea.
No, and... Well, unfortunately, I have to leave this meeting now. Um, before I go, I mean, if somebody would like to move for a vote or move to pump this to next month, if, if you guys feel like you're ready to make any kind of motion before I leave, then...
I'll make the motion that we delay, uh, vote on the resolution till, uh, the January city council meeting.
For a second? Denny, can you hear us? You can hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't hear a second? Were you, were you wanting to second that motion?
No.
Okay. Uh, would anybody else like to make any other motions before I have to leave?
I move that we vote on the resolution as it stands this evening.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Do you want me to read? I already turned off my thing. Resolution, um, thank you. R two zero two four dash one six. All those in favor of approving resolution, or do you wanna do a roll call vote on a resolution?
You can do a roll call vote or just by show a hand, I'll, I'll write it down.
Okay. All those in favor of approving resolution, R two zero two four dash one six, please raise your hand. All those opposed? And your reason for abstaining?
Um, I just, it's, I, I agree, I want the council to be able to, or, sorry, to, counsel to direct the staff to negotiate. Um, I feel it's fairly broad, um, you know, instead of maybe kind of, I know it's hard to pick properties and do that, but, I mean, I, I agree. We need to have council, or, sorry, have staff go forward with the negotiation, opening up, give them the tool to open up and then do that. There's maybe a little bit more information than that.
Okay, so the resolution has passed. Not the end of the world, community members. So my understanding, and, and I'd like confirmation on this, is that now that this resolution has passed, now the city staff can approach the Edgewater HOA, for example...
Or their attorney.
Or their attorney and start the negotiation process of negotiating. Um, my hope is that Randy, who is also on the board of the HOA of Edgewater, can be a liaison, a catalyst, um, a representative, uh, of, of community.
I hope to be deeply involved in that.
Yeah.
I just, to be, of course, that's only a small piece of this resolution.
Sure. Well, is that a taser?
They're just testing it.
I hope so.
They have to cycle it, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
What they have to do before...
Oh.
They have to cycle it for five seconds.
Oh, interesting. Cool, thank you. So, um, once, so once the resolution is passed, I'm, I'm just gonna use the West Side Trail as, as an example. So you start your negotiations with Edgewater HOA, for example, and part of that negotiation, like Peter said, was what would sweeten the deal for you? Adding twenty more parking spaces that are designated to Edgewater HOA, for example, which is a huge concern? Would that sweeten the deal? So that's how the negotiation will go, correct? It's not just, here's some money, we're gonna do whatever we want, right?
We would say, hey, um, I, we're interested and, and we're flexible and whether we would, you know, it would be a sale or, um, or an easement. Um, and what, what would make eighty percent of you have, understanding that it has to be in the known universe, like what are your priorities and what do you want? And we know from the community surveys what kind of community priorities are, but the Edgewater priorities might be different. Or some community priorities, Edgewater people might not, what? And I, I shouldn't use pickleball as an example, but it's just, I represent some jurisdictions, get some very active opposition to pickleball because of the noise. And so it's understanding, we've heard parking, um, what would make you guys feel, what, what would you be looking for? And I assume that would be, um, with the tag, so that people that aren't would be taken in, people that were would be allowed to park. And then of what, what, what are other elements? Understanding that we have to be within the framework of our home plan and TSP. So it's whatever they want and we'll be happy to hear it and then, um, and, and it might be that they, they don't wanna negotiate, what we heard before, so, um, yeah. So if that's...
We can negotiate with you, Mr. Watts, uh, and we're gonna hold you to it on whatever they want.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, you can have, you can have anything, you can all have everything and deal with us at some point.
I'm sorry, what?
So we're on the other side on one thirty-seven. You know, Edgewater, there are all these issues regarding this park. What about us at some point?
Right.
At what point do we get included in this, this negotiation?
I hear you.
Again, I just talked, I spoke for three minutes, hang out, no one's talking to us.
Got it, thank you. All right, um, we're gonna take a five-minute break. I'm gonna take a much longer break because I'm leaving, um, but I'll see you, the rest of you, on Friday. So, uh, five minutes.
Counselor Olson had an emergency and had to step out. So there's three of us and with six counselors, we still have a quorum so we can move forward. Um, we are on, uh, number seven, new business, A, October twenty twenty-four financials. Um, my question.
Actually, gonna hand it off to, uh, Mira, to my right here, to present the October.
All right, so the October two thousand twenty-four financial statements. So we complete the October two thousand twenty-four bank reconciliation for two banks and, uh, state pool account. So we can go through, uh, each fund. The first one is general fund and we have the revenue coming in October, it's three hundred thirty-three thousand nine hundred ninety-one. And then the expenditure is three hundred sixty-six thousand, three hundred thirty-sixty. And the highlight for the revenue is hundred sixty thousand four hundred eighty-one for the, for Cooper Property Tax. Like we mentioned before, uh, uh, property tax start roaring in, starting in October, November. November is the big general, uh, property tax revenue coming. I mean, uh, so and then about twenty-one thousand six hundred, uh, revenues from, uh, for the, different kinds of tax revenue, the liquor tax, you know, the, uh, tax. And then, uh, we have hundred twenty-one thousand five hundred ninety-nine from building permits, which is, uh, for, 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 for,[1614.13] which local lobby for the police lobby. So, now the ending balance, ninety-one thousand, negative ninety-one thousand, because previous ending balance is negative. So, uh, so, but we have stopped, uh, we'll be positive next month, so, uh, November property tax are coming in. The next one is the park, system development fund. Uh, there's no project going on, so just the interest accrual for the revenue. And transfer eight hundred thirty-three dollar out at general fund. So, the ending balance, three hundred ninety, three hundred ninety, uh, seventy-one thousand five hundred ten. So, the next one, uh, transportation's FDC fund, uh, now, uh, going on, so the same interest. And the ending balance, hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred seventy-four. And the last one is transportation development tax fund. Same, who, in, interest revenue only. And that will transfer four hundred. Or, uh, the ending balance is hundred thirty-three and one hundred forty. So, for the October financials, any questions?
Any questions? Denny, you have any questions? He muted instead of unmuted.
Hey, Mark?
Yeah?
I'm running out of battery. You, you're gonna, you don't have a quorum.
Uh-oh.
How much time we got, Denny? Can we probably work out the supplemental budget then?
Can we do the budget?
It's.
Oh, the CPAC one? Do that on Friday. And can we at least do the, uh, supplemental budget? Or can we get approval on the financials and then go to the budget?
Yep, okay. Uh, so the only thing I have for, on, on the budget under current, October spelled incorrectly. That, okay.
Oh, great.
So, with that fixed, any, do we have a motion to approve the, um, October twenty twenty-four financials?
Yes.
Uh, Counselor Jackson has the motioner. And then, uh, Counselor Galpin, you wanna second that?
Second.
All right, just raise your hand.
Yeah, for those who, who approve the financials, please raise your hand. And we can't see your hand, Denny.
Uh, and I don't think.
But it makes your face.
Yeah, put it up by your face.
Yeah, I don't think you're gonna see. It's a yay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, so the next one is the, uh, supplemental budget. In the supplemental budget, what you see before you is an adjustment to, uh, personnel outside of the house to negotiate for the union agreement. It allocates about two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars to work within for our union negotiation. And then it allocates about a hundred thousand dollars, uh, per position for an additional officer, so an additional police officer, uh, and a public information officer, uh, as well as a potential promotion for a sergeant position. So, depending on how the negotiations go, um, with the union, we might have room, uh, to look at maybe a double promotion for sergeant. I'm not sure if that's a, a reality, but it's something that we've discussed. Um, but we're, we're trying to make some things work, but, uh, that's in the supplemental budget.
And this says Resolution two zero two four dash one seven, correct?
Yeah, okay.
So, uh, Denny, do we still have you?
I think he might be trying to find a.
Battery cable?
Uh, a charging cable.
All right. I could call him.
Well.
Denny, we could put you on speaker.
It's probably the same phone. It would be my guy.
I hope not. Or maybe it's another. Trying to get through.
There he is.
Looking at his phone. Are you calling him?
I can call him.
Looking at.
Or Denny?
Should we recess for a few minutes? You're breaking up, but I can kinda hear you.
Okay, okay, there's Mike again. Yeah, Mike.
There's better.
Denny, I'm gonna put you on speaker, if that's all right?
Yes, okay.
All right. Have we, uh, worked out, I would think, of any questions for, um, ordinance two oh two four dash one seven?
Going for Mark with the phone. Now, I can maybe. I'm not.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we, I think we have him.
All right, Denny, can we, okay. Denny, I think we have you on the other one.
On this one now.
Yeah, we have you, yeah.
Yeah, there you are.
I just hung up.
All right, so any, any questions from?
No.
You have any questions on this one, Jen?
No. It looks pretty straightforward to me.
So, okay, do I have, um, a motion to approve Resolution two zero two four dash one seven, um, allowing the supplemental, supplemental budget pursuant, uh, increase and decrease pursuant to ORS two nine four dot three three eight, providing for the receipt appropriation expenditures of unexpected funds?
So moved.
Second.
Do you need, do you need a separate roll call or just hands?
Uh, just hands will work, as long as I can see. I'm, Denny, you might have to be vocal. I have two here.
I can see you. Looks like his arm is very.
Will you give a verbal yes or no there?
There it is.
You see it?
Got it. Thank you, Denny. Yep.
Thank you. So, if we have you on the phone, I'm happy to go over the presentation for this one, if you wanted to try that.
Would, would, uh?
We need to do the CPAC. Should we do CPAC? Probably going out of order at this point.
Would, uh, does, does Denny have access to be able to see any of this presentation, or?
Denny, can you see the share screen?
Yeah, I can, I can hear you.
That's, that's the priority, I think.
You wanna do the D? All right, so we will move on to, uh, number D, the ordinance number zero two zero two four dash zero one, an ordinance adopting King City Community Code amendments to comply with statewide regulations pertaining to climate-friendly and equitable communities. Uh, my question.
I'm gonna hand it over to Max. This is an emergency ordinance to be in compliance with state, uh, climate-friendly and equitable communities laws. Uh, this was presented to the planning commission last, number fourteen. So, uh, and I believe, and Max, correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a unanimous approval on that, right?
An approval with some minor amendments that are just kinda like corrections.
And those are put into the?
Those are put into the other one that was brought on the agenda. Okay. So, I'll get, the meeting on Wednesday lasts an hour and a half. I'll give you an abridged version unless there's urgent questions. But essentially, CPAC is a statewide mandate, stands for climate-friendly and equitable communities. And DLCD, the Department of Land Conservation Development, came out. They set these requirements for every jurisdiction in the state to, um, change their code. This will be an ongoing process, but the first phase was they essentially are eliminating all parking lot mandates for new developments. So, if you are a new developer, the code amendment is the King City Code. If you wanna build a, a shopping center, or, uh, deli, or whatever, a, some sort of business, or multifamily residence within the city, the city code no longer reflects that you have to have a minimum amount of parking space. Done for a number of reasons. Mostly, the idea is that you want to encourage walkable communities. You want to have communities that are less reliant on cars. And one way to do that is to have just smaller, street-facing, street-facing businesses. Down, kinda like a main street feel. Um, you, you don't wanna have big, giant parking lots like you have over in the plots. Has just this massive asphalt seat that is very rarely full. Doesn't have any trees, doesn't have any nice amenities. It's just this big plot of land that is covered in asphalt. So, I went in and I did four code amendments for, code amendments for four different sections in the code. And I'll just briefly go over each of those. So, chapter sixteen, one one four, one thirty is the parking and loading section in the Kingston Terrace District Code. What I did was I just went in and I changed some of the language. It already had provisions for not allowing, or not having minimum parking. But there was a provision there for electric service capacity. So, if you have, if you build a parking lot, you have to have electric service capacity. So, that in future times, someone can come in and put in electric charging stations. Uh, I changed the language in that section to reflect the language that was a little bit updated and more concise that I put into the old King City Code. So, it's in the, it's in the staff report, but now it's more clear and objective. Uh, essentially, if you have less than five acres, every parking space that you put in has to have a minimum of twenty percent. If you have more than four, five acres, every parking space that you put in has to have a minimum of forty percent electric charging station capacity. Then landscape and beautification was kinda the bigger one. And again, these electric capacity and landscape stuff is a little bit above and beyond what the state requires. We did eliminate minimum parking, but then we also added this electric service capacity provisions, tree provisions, so that you have to now, uh, have a certain amount of tree coverage over your parking lot, if you are to build a parking lot. And so, landscape and beautification section, uh, I referenced the, what I'm asking is to adopt through the resolution in Urban Forestry Guide, which essentially has a list of trees that the city will allow residents and, uh, business and developers to plant on street trees and in parking lots. And what brought this up was we get a lot of residents that come into the city and say they have a bad street tree that's damaging their sidewalk, and they want to get rid of it, or they have a disease, a tree that's diseased. They'll ask myself, or Mr. Runyon, or Mira, whoever's upfront, you know, do you guys have recommendations for trees? And we usually would give them, like, Washington County's list, or Portland, or, we wanted to have our own. Um, with that being said, I derived most of this list from Tiger's List, which, as Sarah Vayner explained, uh, multiple times, they spent years vetting their system. They have a very robust tree code, which we're not ready to adopt. But I thought that this would be just a nice little thing to start giving out to people. Um, and then I referenced it briefly in the development code, so that when a developer wants to build a parking lot or something, they have to come in here and look at our list of trees. There's also a section in here about if a neighbor has, is worried about a tree in their neighbor's yard, that they, there's like a mitigator, a mediation process now. Say, hey, I think your cherry tree is diseased, or I want you to cut it down, 'cause that branch is gonna fall on my fence, or something. And there's a whole process now that we can point people to, to help them mediate their issues without the city having to be involved, which we tend not to do anyway. So, that was the landscape and beautification, this whole added tree canopy provision. And then, uh, again, the, uh, the quantity, we just wanted to eliminate minimum parking. We also added a section for, um, for if you're building a parking garage. But I don't even think parking garages are allowed in most of the zoning code. Uh, and then the final section that I amended, or that I'm proposing to amend, is the approval standard, sixteen one five two. And that essentially was just something that was missed when we were doing code amendments a few years ago. And it, uh, along with the eliminating of minimum parking, you also can no longer require homes to be built with garages. Require it. Most homes will still be built with garages, except for the developer's prerogative, but now the city can no longer require it. And so, when I brought these, uh, these code amendments to DLCD, I spoke with staff there. They looked over it, they vetted the amendments. They gave us what revisions they thought were important. We followed their revisions, and this is what we're left with. And then I took it to the planning commission last week. And as I mentioned, we had a robust and fruitful conversation. We talked about things that we would like to keep an eye on for future code amendments to make this a little bit more concise and more comprehensive. But ultimately, just given within the timeframe that we have right now, and the constraints that this is due by the end of the month, we decided that this will just be a first step, um, these minor code amendments that I'm proposing today. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Denny, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. We got you.
No questions?
I don't have any, I don't have any questions. I just have more of an opinion that I'm not in agreement about. No, I don't. Parking, right? Everyone, that's a big issue, transportation and parking. And then we have to go by, by state laws that say, that's parking now.
And this is very recent. We actually, yeah, when we were talking to New Home, um, they, they were showing us, this was last year, or well, earlier this year, they showed us a concept for an apartment, uh, that they're proposing, maybe in the future, as a future basic for the town center. If Al ever does decide to develop. And they had different concepts, but then they, they were able to put in more housing because they reduced the parking. And so, that's another aspect.
I get, I get that, yeah.
It still encourages transit and stuff like that, but, you know, it's not, it's not always gonna be practical.
Well, and it's like the current, current Thirty-first and Fisher development would have been able to be a lot more dense than it is. It's, when they got approved, they had to have, what, two parking spaces, or three? Or units, I don't remember what it was. But it would be a lot more dense if, if they were, uh, permitted from now.
The, um, actual, not yet even really been planned or anything. Well, it's been planned, but the, the lot seventeen on one thirty-first and Fisher, that big square now that's just grass, you know, that probably would have been smaller, because they, they wouldn't have had to put in parking space for parking for that building. So, yeah, it would have been, so it would have had an impact. That's a good example.
Yeah, thank you. All right, if, uh, no other questions, I will, uh, take a motion to approve ordinance number zero two zero two four dash zero one, an ordinance adopting King City Community Code amendments to comply with statewide regulations pertaining to climate-friendly and equitable communities.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Or you can, aye, if.
You, uh, you wanna jump into the presentation that we prepared for this one, uh, Westside Trail?
For, uh, B, Resolution two oh two four dash one five? How much time do you have left, Counselor Gal, uh, Galpin?
Plug myself into the wall, so, uh, I think I'm okay.
Okay, you got plugged in? Okay. All right, then we will move on. I'm turned on here. Uh, so now, since we skipped a few, we're back to B, Resolution number R twenty twenty-four dash one five, uh, a resolution for the Westside Trail.
There was here, may try to, share my screen.
So, it's on the very top next to? Or it says Westside Trail, that little, or on the very bottom? There's two spots.
So, deal bear with us. We're gonna go through some slides here, uh, kind of what the vision for the Westside Trail in King City looks like. Um, Max and I, uh, are not pro photographers, or, uh, our film cinema is probably not the greatest in the world, but we did compile some pictures and some, uh, film options of what they've done in other places. The, the images that we're gonna show you are improvements that were done in Reed Crossing. So, for the Butternut Creek area. And so, from this very first image, you can kind of see what like a bike, a BMX bike course would possibly look like here to the right. And then you would see actually like an open grass field. Westside Trail rollout map, which you have before you out here, has been, um, refined a couple times. Uh, initially, we started out with some pretty generalizations on where things could go, where they can fit, and how they might, uh, interact, in our area. Um, we had a number of public outreach. Um, I'm gonna show this video real quick, and then I'll get to the public outreach. Just kinda walks you through like what a, um, trail might resemble, what a street crossing might resemble. Uh, this is a dog park. Hopefully, it's coming through, like it is kind of, minds moving a lot faster than that is. So, it's just, but take the walk down Butternut Creek Trail and illustrate some of this. I don't know if it would be any better. This is kind of taking you up to a community garden, and what a community garden might resemble underneath power lines. The, the garden here with the plots, the fruit trees, they have little garden plots. There's water right there. Um, that's shelter up ahead. That's barbecue areas and picnic areas. When we talk about possible picnic areas and things underneath the line, they.
When we talk about possible picnic areas and things underneath the line, these here might resemble something similar to this. Of course, they had to work with PGE, will have to work with PGE in Bonneville. As you follow this trail down, there's a big open field, like a soccer field, like what we're talking about, and that goes into that dog park at the very end. I'm going to show you some of the other images here, go into the next slide, of things that we looked at. Some of our community outreach involves open house to get it started. We had about forty to fifty people that showed up at the initial open house. Forty of the people that showed up were probably in their mid to late forties and above. We didn't have any young families or young kids that showed up to participate in that. So afterwards, we felt like we needed to kind of do some additional outreach and to try to reach other demographics. So we put up a couple pop-ups down at the King City Park during evening, afternoon events, where we had our tables out there with our stickers, and we really had some really good community input at both of those. I would say we had anywhere from about forty to fifty people that showed up at each one of them. And then we did a kids' only, kind of like a kids and teacher version at Deer Creek, and that's what this picture is. We had all the third, fourth, and fifth graders come by and provide their input on what they wanted to see. By this board here, this is where the preferences kind of came in, and you'll kind of see, we were really heavy on the playground, we were really heavy on river access, dog parks, basketball courts, the kids were, they didn't want like a full basketball court. What we have at King City Park is a half court, so they were trying to promote a full court version. Of course, the river access, we're working on right now with an Oregon Marine Board grant. That property is actually in King City's control already, we own that property, so we're able to kind of move forward on that. The playground was a big one, even though we already have playgrounds on the other end in King City Park. So we had discussed what a playground might look like and where it could be located, and we figured with the current location of playground, the King City Community Park, we needed to locate the playground further to the north. So when you look at some of the rollout mapping in front of you, the engineers and consultants tried to program that park north of Capulet and surface that area near the Mobile Home Park and areas north of the Fisher Road extension. Of course, walking trail, people were really excited about the walking trail, few people asked for soft surface or equestrian trail, we'll try to incorporate those as well. This trail is part of a multi-trail system that runs all up and down the West Side and connects south to Heritage Mines property. It continues north up Bull Mountain and over toward Progress Ridge and all the way up toward Portland. So this is King City's section to plan and design, but we've worked out making different ways in which we might be able to do this. So the consultants kind of put it all in this map, everything that was asked for from high priority to low priority. Our highest priorities, like I mentioned before, were river access, community gardens, dog parks, picnic areas. So you'll see those in purple, they're in that Majemtah color on the map, those are like the higher priority, and the ones that are in the yellow are the lower priority uses. And it just gives you an idea of what like a community garden might look like in this facility. Talk about a dog park and what a dog park might look like, as well as restroom facilities and other things. Couple pictures, but there's actually two different dog parks on the walk that Max and I took, and each one was a little bit different. So figured there was a lot of demand for a dog park, and most people wanted it close to the King City. That's why it's located in the southern. The kayak boat launch was an element that a lot of people had requested, and we asked our engineers with putting together kind of a preliminary design on what this might look like. Get a dock down here with a kayak slip and an ADA ramp that would go up, that would require some excavation to the bank, and also some finishing there as well. Part of the plan also includes ending the parking access there, so that people will have areas to park vehicles in. We look at, it's like some of the feedback that we received, these charts kind of show a little bit about some of the general assumptions from the survey. Fifty-six people, or sixty-six of their respondents said that it was closer there to their fifty percent. Twenty-four. And then, you know, we had about thirty-seven percent say it's not their vision. We had nineteen say, nineteen of those that said it was exactly their vision. So essentially, it's about eighty-five totally saying that they're in favor of this, and about thirty-seven saying that they were not. And then we had nine say that they had no opinion. I had a couple here and there, close to my vision, but not. Dominantly, majority favored for the park activity on what we're trying to plan here. There is folks that are not in favor of it, obviously. When we looked at the open house, we had a different demographic to what we had when we did the public outreach. You can see those two, the differences between those two on the right-hand side, like those that showed up for the open house, those are the responses I received on the top, and those that we gathered from going out in person. As you can see, the demand kind of flipped from what we had at the open house to what we actually ground cripped with the people down at the park and at the. Overall, the consolidation of all the responses are on the left, here at the bottom left, kind of see how everything ranks, both the open house and the public outreach. Thank you, just a minor correction, because I provided these charts to Mike. The bottom left is the results from the survey, bottom right from the school and the park, and top right is from the open house, so.
It was the results of online survey?
The bottom left. And the results of three separate outreach, not a consolidation. Perfect. Thank you, sir. Guys are good, I'll go ahead and move on. I just have a few more slides here, just to kind of give us an idea of what we look at when we talk about an open field, what that might look like. So you have a grass open field there, that's south of the Fisher Extension, and along that back alleyway there, kind of what we envision here. Look at community facilities, one of the things that we received some comments about were requests for restrooms, particularly near the park or near some of the facilities. So we have like a sample restroom facility here on the bottom right, and then I wanted to make sure, illustrated what a street crossing might look like. This is one version, there's other versions where you might have an elevated crossing, and that's what we're proposing, is more of an elevated crossing. Also, we talked about charging stations, kayak lockers, and those sort of things down at the very end, down near the King City Park, as those might directly link into the river and areas across, and I struggle with it. This is what we talk about when we talk about like a natural park, or a nature park, or natural features with the wetlands. This is also in Reed Crossing, sorry about the filming, I apologize. Horrible, and it'll take you for a spin. So you can see how it encapsulates the wetland, it provides a nice interface, offens the edges between the development and the natural areas, and it provides some nice kiosks, some inspirational kiosks along the way. It has this nice soft gravel surface trail, it has some nice sitting areas, it has like a little amphitheater that you saw when you first walked in, really nice bridges and areas that you might go do some yoga, or some zen, or what have you. But beautifully done, well-put-together nature park, Reed Crossing. Shows how the housing interfaces with that area, and shows what we could possibly do in some of these. Also, we have Clean Water Services, that's also interested in teaming with the city on enhancing that drainage that follows the western tour of the West Side Trail in between the Bonneville Lines and one hundred and thirty-seventh. Our service is really interested in partnering to do some wetland enhancement, or some storm retention and enhancement. Just wanted to share these with you, so you can kind of get an idea of what we're talking about. Here's a splash pad, playground in the back, and bicycle racks. We wouldn't do a splash pad, this is off of the area, but we do have a splash pad planned for the other end of town, over up Kingson Terrace, but here, I just wanted to get an idea of what bike racks might look like along the trail, along with the playground, and give you one last look at all the facilities that are contained in the plan. I just wanted to explain that this is just a concept, and different things are going to be different priorities throughout this. Like the number one priority for us is probably going to be the trail and the infrastructure extensions, including the roads, and then followed by probably the kayak access, the waterway access, and then if we're able to then start going for some of the other amenities, get some grant dollars to add other developments, like the dog park, or the community garden, or the grass field, or those. It will be a multi-based process that will likely take us the next twenty years to fully see this vision come to life, possibly longer. It's, when you're chasing grant dollars to do these sort of things, nothing really happens overnight, so that's kind of the vision, that's the plan that they have in front of you. And the planning commission recommended approval of this, five to two in November, and so bringing it back to you for your authorization to move this plan forward, and like I had mentioned earlier, this gets up to the twenty-five percent with the adoption of the resolution, and I can then go for permit. It makes our ARFA application look better, it strengthens our ask for federal funding, and as I said, ARFA funding window that we applied for, those funds don't become available until two thousand twenty-eight, and it's the two thousand twenty-eight, two thousand thirty window, and that's just for the trail and the roads. So getting everything in line to do these other amenities that you see on this rollout map before you, it's going to take us, nothing's going to be happening overnight, we still have many houses that need to be done throughout Kingson Terrace, but this just gives us a concept plan to move forward with. And the resolution just basically says that the council supports the city's efforts in planning this trip. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions, Counselor?
Tried to pull up an overall Metro West Side map, and the one, only one I can find is from two thousand fourteen, just because in my own mind, I'd like to know, you know, where it starts and where it ends, and like I go to this Sherwood, what, I mean, the street and bridge over the top of ninety-nine there at Sunset, quite a project.
It's like behind Murray, along Beaverton, all under the power lines, I've walked good chunks of it.
Ridden my bike on, looked at it from, by almost from OHSU, all the way down, and up down here on Phantom Creek, almost, almost. There's some disconnect, and you got to go through a couple neighborhoods here and there. But I think the idea is that it provides an alternative mobile tran, or auto transportation for those that want to jump on their bikes, and my battery's connected.
Sure. I used to live on the east side, in the, you know, Springwater Corridor, which is a part of going from Sandy, Oregon, down to the Willamette River.
Yeah. And it's, I don't think it's quite the, is it an extended Springwater? Because Springwater's a long trek, complex type of.
And no, it doesn't go, the, it, Springwater itself goes to Gresham.
Yeah, yeah. It is, it's a, it's a.
And it starts by Palm Springs.
Okay. It's similar, I guess, in nature. I think Portland and the metro vision is similar in nature to provide an offer. And this, this is just our stretch, and, you know, we want to try to place amenities strategically for our residents as best we can, and maybe they're not ready for those yet, and that's fine.
Right.
I don't think that it prohibits us from, from beginning ahead, you know?
Sure. Springwater has a lot of issues, and part of it, I think, is because it's a long, narrow trail, basically without amenities.
And there's no, yeah, there's no amenities and no houses, and so there's all these areas where they can just go camp out, and, yeah, so it's just inviting. I mean, the one good thing about this is that if we are able to.
My, hopefully you guys can hear us, sorry about the breakup there. My computer's probably going to die next, since we're pushing batteries here.
I have a power cord.
I know, right? I think I have one around here somewhere. But ultimately, we were just asking the council to consider approving the resolution for this. It's.
Soon. Enter your meeting ID, followed by count.
It's been recommended for approval by the planning commission, we're asking the council to consider passing the resolution, so that we can move forward on permits and the ARFA grant and everything else. And I'll answer any questions, Mike.
B, followed by count. Otherwise, just press count to. You have entered the meeting as a panelist. Attendees can now hear you.
Why does that always take him so long?
This meeting is being recorded. Recording.
Sorry? Ronnie's catching strain. Danny, can you hear us?
Go ahead. Now, Danny, can you hear us?
I can hear it. Yeah.
Okay. Just ask if you had any questions? Your finger's right in front of the camera.
I think you will.
Move it the other way.
He wants to be in Cladney though.
There we go, that's better. Yeah, that's what I was, I wasn't sure. Did you have questions, Councilor Galton?
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
I think the only thing, the thing I have on it is that we have to remember it's right the concept plan. I think I've kind of always had all along plans change. You know, if I'm going to go to the grocery store on my way home, something happens and I don't go and I have to go later, plans change. But just, I think we just need to kind of keep in mind, right? First phase of the plan to kind of help to get back off of the other resolution that, you know, if land and maybe by the time things come to concept of Gresham, it is just a walking trail. We don't know.
And I would just point out, this is not a on-plan amendment. It's just a concept. It technically, it just enlays a foundation for us to go apply for grants and say, we've done this public outreach. We put together the study, we have the data from those studies. And this is what we heard from the community. These are our priorities.
Well, it seems like the data from that, I mean, what was it, eighty-six percent, I think? That favored some portion of it. So it seems like there is some pretty good community.
I don't remember the lady's name that I was talking to during the break. And she says, well, I don't think people in the Mobile Mountain, whatever the state, really have approved it. If you've talked to them. And I said, well, no. And I said, have you? And she goes, well, no, because I go out and canvass them. So.
I would look for your charger cable. I have it out there. Yeah.
You know, and.
We have the real thing here, so.
So I think we've done seven or eight outreach. Or eight.
If you leave the open house after the planning commission, eight, seven, if you have the both of the planning commissions. The Wyman has public input.
So I mean, for the most part, the park is received positively. There is some concern that you've heard tonight. And people are concerned about parking, they're concerned about traffic, they're concerned about all the people that it might bring. But a lot of that, we don't know what that's going to look like. And at least having a plan, you can move forward. But without a plan, really nothing. And this is a grant we've been tasked with by Metro. I think they had mentioned earlier that the deadline is not December thirty-first. But our grant deadline was November twenty-fifth. So it's for fifteen for us to do it.
November twenty-fifth is when we have the plan.
So our efforts have been to get everything in place and everything in line so that we can strengthen our. Which is regional federal funding. Right now, it's looking at like an eight million dollar ask for the year, eight to ten million dollar ask for the year twenty twenty-eight through twenty thirty. So the more, like, as long as we delay, more costs to build these infrastructure projects.
I think one thing in its favor is you can stand on the sidewalk at Beach Bend and look towards the Tuolitan River. And you can see most of the way with your naked eye, which I think as far as undesirable activity, that's probably helpful for us. But because basically it's an open field and you can see most of, you can, you know, there's no nooks and crannies to hide in. So I think the concerns about undesirable criminal activity or whatever nuisance activity is probably.
I could just add.
Always a concern, but I don't, I don't think it should be at the top of anybody's list.
So this just happened yesterday, or on Monday. Mr. Runge and I were driving back on Beach Bend. We passed by the power lines and there was a huge pile of garbage sitting there that hadn't been reported. But it was like fifteen piles of garbage, which if it was a park, people would have reported it. It would have been noticed. But right now, it's a big empty field with not a lot of activity. People don't notice when there are those things because it's not really a part of anything. It's just leftover space. At least at that part. It was up by the power line, actually right next to the wetlands.
Really?
I think that is. But to answer your question from before, you were asking about the scope of the trail. Ultimately, when this crosses the Tuolitan, it'll go to the Tompkins Ice Age Trail, which is going to connect all the way down to Wilsonville. So it will be an equivalent or a counterpart to the Springwater Corridor because it'll stretch almost twenty-five miles from Wilsonville to Forest Park. That's the, and I can send you a map because Metro has an active map that has all of their trail plans throughout the whole Metro region. And you can click on each of the little components in the map and it'll tell you if it's planned, if it's in development, if it's being funded. They have little attributes.
I would love that.
It's a very fun little interactive map to explore. I'll see if I can find it and send it to you tomorrow.
I would love that. And it might be something to put on our website.
The link.
So that everybody, anybody who has a curiosity can click on the different segments and see where we are in the scheme of things. Because I mean, you know, now I can go down Fano Creek and get to Beaverton by foot.
And that's, that's cool.
And that's cool.
All right. Any other, any further discussion or any more from staff? All right. And now I'll take a motion to approve resolution number R two zero two four dash one five. A resolution approving the Westside Trail Segment One Concept Plan.
So moved.
Do we have second?
Second.
He did. I could read his lips.
All in favor? All right. Moving on, did we skip anything we had? We did financials, we did that one just now, we did resolution twenty-two dash one seven. Dash oh one, looks like we did everything. Police, Chief Happala, you're up.
I'd like to just be on behalf of myself and the staff here at KCP with the holiday party. It's very nice to get the whole team together, you know, get all to sit around and be home for a number hours and just enjoy each other's. So again, I'll say thank you. Um, TSA filming has begun for the February renewal for. And so that has begun, actually began today. I'm part of it. And we'll have one more person still tomorrow. And we will finally, train is almost complete. We act on the forward body camera. We're shooting for the rollout to be January sixth, so we'll start. Body warmth and that's all I got for now.
Any questions for Chief? All right, moving on to the city manager's report.
Also, I get quick. I just want to say thanks to Max, Keith and Matt for all their work on putting everything together. I know it's a big lift and congratulations, you guys. More stuff to come for the very first step meeting. But I think we'll get together with our acquisition team and start the negotiations now. And reach out to the HOA and hopefully time and discussion, we can understand each other a little bit better. So looking forward to that opportunity here next. We do have three counselors coming in. Our next meeting is on Friday to interview the four candidates. I hope everyone got the jackets of the four candidates that we received. We did get two people that were interested that came in on Monday. But as the mayor had suggested, we informed them that it was beyond the deadline. And that we were sticking with the notice and deadlines that was published. So we turned away those two people. But we're still negotiating with our union back and forth. Challenge, and all I did, hopefully we'll be able to work those out here at the new year. There's a lot of good things happening. I'm really excited about the opportunities that the future beholds. And the first things I want to try to do is get into the new year is get everyone together for kind of a visioning and goal-setting session. And get everyone working hopefully in direction. So we'll see how that all goes this year. So our next, after Friday, we won't be there until January fifteenth. And that'll be the swearing in, appointment of officers and all that. Christmas party was wonderful. Thank you all for those that attended. It was a good time and a good relief. And I just can't praise the staff enough for all their work over last year and last year and a half, two years. Never, it's never easy being in the public sector and being under all that. Uh, thank you.
Thank you, Manager Weston. Councilor Galton, do you have any report?
Yes. Seventy-five degrees up here in Austin. Merry Christmas.
All right, thank you.
Um, no, not really, no. Not much, yeah. Family and Christmas and things are kind of intruding on some of that.
Yes, same with me. I don't have, there wasn't yet too much going on. I did bring a little gift for the staff today. So appreciate all the hard work they've done throughout the year. And with that, I'll take the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Good night, Councilor Galton. I think the gal. Oh, yeah.
Very good.
Hang on, let me turn this off.